Welcome everyone in person and online. We have a great turnout for this evening. Because it's an organizational meeting and we have not appointed a chair and vice chair, I get the opportunity to open the meeting. We have two new board members. I want to welcome Heather Valor, who has vast experience with our district, representing for Barnard on a three-year. Lee Fernandez, who is from Woodstock, again for a three-year term. Returning to us, Ryan Townsend has a cool negative in yet from Bridgewater. Katie Reed for three years, welcome back. Ron Killington, Bob Cream, who just can't leave us, which we're really excited about. We're not going to even tell you how many years we go way back.
Where's your backdrop, Bob?
And welcoming back Carrie Briscoe as represented from Woodstock. And so those are the new and returning positions of this year. So just wanted to thank everyone for putting in. So the purpose of this opening meeting is to elect the board officers for the MVSU SD boards. The elected, the elected will hold the same position on both boards. A board chair and board clerk are legally required. A vice chair is best practice, but not legally required. I will open for nominations for board chair. If board members are interested, you can call out a nomination.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, but.
You don't hear it because I have my plug in.
Chair, do we have a second?
I would say.
What's anyone else? Any other nominations for board chair? Seeing none moving their names forward, can we take a vote? Asking people to vote on the motion for Carrie Briscoe as board chair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's okay. I'll just go in here. I'm not going to stay on it long.
Can Barbara? Will you? Okay.
We have some people who if we could mute, what's your board number? Alright, so Carrie, I pass the gun with that to you. Alright, well, thank you very much, everybody, for electing me as the chair for another year. And at this time, we need to elect a vice chair. We do elect to do that on our board. Is there a nomination for vice chair?
I nominate Ben for.
Any other names? To put forward? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Alright, well, thank you, Ben, for all the hard work you've already done. Alright, and also, we usually elect a clerk. Matt Stout has been our clerk. Is there a nomination for clerk?
I would like to nominate someone other than myself. It's, it's rather who we point to. John, I'd like to nominate you as clerk. And end up the fact that I'm late. But I mean, Raina does all the work for the board, but it's just when we go to the executive session, just to take notes when we go in, when we go out. It's very straightforward. Second.
Any other nominations for clerk?
No discussion?
All those in favor of electing John Williams as clerk, please say aye. Any opposed? Alright, thank you, John, for being willing to put this down. Okay, at this time, we are going to discuss reorganizing our committees and working groups. I thought it would be useful for everybody to, each chair of a board, a committee or a working group would say briefly what the work of their board is. And I do have some requests from some folks who asked to move from one to another, which we can talk about at the end. And other people who may want to change have the right to bring that forward tonight. And then it would be Bennett and my job to finalize that. So why don't we start with, hang on. Carrie's going to pull up the.
Chair.
There it is.
Hang on, but I have to change the chair. I don't lose anything.
Welcome around. Alright, Brian, you're the chair now? Alright, Finance Committee, with the Finance Committee, please tell us briefly what the work is and what the commitment of time is.
Sure, Finance Committee is obviously responsible for putting together the annual budget. We get the pleasure of working closely with the Business Operations Manager, Jim Fenn, and also Sherri Susan at a lot of our meetings. But the, things that may come along outside of the regular budget cycle and require an opinion on the expenditure of the school district. But the big job is the annual budget, and you're looking for a time commitment?
Yeah, how often do you meet?
Yeah, well, it's like other committees, we meet once a month on the opposite occasions of the board meeting. And then if there's something that comes along that requires more media attention, we'll do an ad hoc meeting. But let's say that time commitment is probably, you know, less than five hours a month. Is that fair for other audience committee members?
Depends on the season, right?
Right.
Send us all the work. We just have so we can vote. Discuss too, I think. Alright, thank you, Ben. Policy?
Yep, Elliot Rubin. So the Policy Committee is charged with working through all the existing policies, making sure they're all up to date. We had a mandate from Vermont School Board Association to do that. We're in the process of it. So policies are really the structure, the important structure that the whole organization is based on. So it's pretty important to keep them sort of relevant. We do come up with new ones when it's needed. We're working on one that's involving athletics and activities right now, which we've been working on for about a year. And the time commitment is basically, you know, we meet every month and it's about an hour, hour and a half when we meet. In between time, we try to each take a policy and work on it. We sometimes have to do a little homework in terms of getting other input from it. So we certainly would welcome anybody who would like to continue or other people to work on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Buildings and grounds?
Sure, so I chair Buildings and Grounds currently. We definitely could use some new members. We lost Bryce, who just came off the board. So we it's, I should make it clear that we are mostly responsible for the maintenance of all the buildings and prioritizing the projects that need to get done. And about, what, five, six years ago, we created a second committee for the new build. So our committee is not primarily focused on the new build, but we're focused on how do we maintain the current facilities. And that is really seven different properties, Redding West, Barnard, Killington, Prosper Valley School, Middle School, High School, and this building. We meet monthly like all the other committees. There's not much of a time commitment outside of those meetings. But one of the main things we try to accomplish before budgeting season is selecting the priority of, a priority list of projects that will go into the budget. And then we respond to any proposals that come into RFPs. So we will evaluate the different bids that come in and pick a winner. And generally, just sort of scope and evaluate any capital projects or any large investments in our, in our buildings and grounds. That's it.
Okay, thank you. The working group, the HSMS Working Group?
Well, that is the new build. And the mandate or the orders kind of given by the board some years ago were to kind of kindly do the needful to bring about a new build. Like we, we came pretty close just recently in terms of the funding. But, you know, it's a mixture. I think working groups are interesting because they're a mixture of board members and community members, right? And so you can see some of the names here. You've got a lot of folks from the administration and the teachers on there and other community members. But yeah, that's, that one is constantly evolving. I think that's one that we'll, you know, see a lot of activity over the next, the next school year or next year of the board's activities. But I don't know if there's anything to say about the new board committee.
Time commitment?
Not much, Albert. Not much.
Eighty hours.
No, it's interesting. I mean, certainly this last year and getting all the steps, you know, bringing on the construction manager, bringing on the owner's representative, you know, there were, there was, you know, quite a bit. And then the, gosh, the value engineering sessions, those kinds of things that got a little bit intense. But that was just a subset of that committee. And we pieced it up for various functions. So I don't know, I'd say for any particular committee member, even at the height of it, I wouldn't think it'd be more than ten hours a month for that activity.
Okay, thank you. Configuration and enrollment group. Mary Ann has gone off the board, so that we would need a new chair. That group kind of meets on demand when there is a need to look at enrollment trends and or configuration of buildings and things like that. There was a, an intense time a couple of years ago when we were reconfiguring Prosper Valley as a separate school for grades five and six. There have not been as many meetings recently. Discussion of the mascot along with a student group has been one of the topics. So that, that does not necessarily meet every month. It meets when it's needed to meet. So it's hard to say what the time commitment is. On the board. Or do you want to add anything to that?
No, that's, that's accurate. I think there, it ebbs and flows. Like some, some months we're probably meeting twice a month and then some months we go without a meeting. So it has a little pattern.
Right.
I would say the, at least for me, the months where we're committing more time, it's, it's good work and the group gets along really well. I'm always excited about the progress, so I'm excited to hear more about the mascot and what the students want us to do with that. But it's always been an enjoyable group to work with.
The Communication Working Group, I think Sam can speak to that.
Um, the Communication Working Group, we don't really meet very often. I kind of ended up as chair just by default as being one of the people who was still on it from past times. I would love for somebody else to take charge of chairing it. Or I'm happy I can chair as long as I'm also not on policy at the same time, which is what I am currently doing both. So, yeah, if somebody has a passion for communication and getting out information to the community and would really like to take helm of communication, I'm happy to give over the reins. As of right now, what it mostly consists of is having different postings and other communications or letters, like the recent letter that we put out on Friday or that Carrie and Ben put together and sent over. And I just, you know, put it on all the listservs, Front Porch Forum, numerous Facebook groups. And yeah, that's, that's about it. But there's definitely room, room for growth if somebody else would love to take charge of it.
Alright, thank you. The Negotiations Working Group is down to one member, which is myself. And I actually have a couple of people who've shown interest in that. So pleased to say that that is also a group that works when it's needed to work. We hope to wrap up a three-year contract with the, with the teachers soon. And the support staff has a three-year contract that's in its second year now. So that's a group that probably won't have a lot of activity, except when a question comes up about the contract that needs to be interpreted. So it, it's again, it can be time intensive in the, in the negotiating year, but it's usually our, a couple, couple hours of a meeting when it's needed. And the Fundraising Working Group. I think that's more of a community group at this point. Yes, so they, they, I don't even see if there's anybody from the board on that group currently. And I, I know they worked on projects and do a lot of publicity for projects. And I think that's it. So I did put out an email to the board members, except for Heather and Ernie, because they weren't yet sworn in, and asked about changes. And I have the following changes to propose. Which I believe we do need to vote on these, but there may be more. So would somebody put a motion to discuss changes to committees and working groups?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So Ryan Townsend has asked to be moved to negotiations. And my question, Ryan, is did you want to stay, where was Ryan? Oh, there is. Did you want to stay on the other group that you're currently in, which I believe is finance?
I'm currently in the new build group, which I didn't participate once in this past year, so I apologize for that. But thanks for leaving me on the website for it. No, I I mean, I'm happy to help with that, but I'd actually like to try to join Building and Maintenance, or if that is a possibility.
Building and grounds?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Alright. But again, I don't want to leave you guys for it. And if you need people, I'm happy to help Ben or the group. But yeah, I've been pretty useless on that for the past year, so.
So you would move off of the HSMS Build Group and onto Buildings and Grounds?
Yeah, if possible, yes, we.
Okay. And John Williams and I discussed him moving on to the negotiations, but remaining on the, the Build Group, correct?
Okay.
And Josh, you would like to be moved to the New Build Group? And you were on the Communication. Do you want to stay on that?
I can stay on that.
Okay.
That one doesn't really take a lot of commitment. Still, it's just kind of one needed.
Okay, great. And Corinne has asked to go to Finance from Policy, so she would move to Finance and drop off of Policy. I know that Buildings and Grounds needs some members and it looks like Ryan will fill one of those roles. Are there other board members who would request a change of what they're currently doing?
I would like to not be on both Communication and Policy. I can do one or the other.
Okay.
Or, or if I'm, I can stay on Communication if it's as like a working group and it's just as needed. But I don't want to be like responsible for like chairing and like setting meetings or anything like that. Like I'll, I'll be on the working group as long as I don't have to like be the, the chair of Communications and responsible for making, like setting the meetings and everything like that.
Okay, so well, why don't we for now leave you where you are and then if it becomes too much, we can make a shift. Is that alright with you, Sam?
Yeah, as long as there's just somebody else who's the main, yeah, that's fine.
A question. I have a question just to clarify, just on here, we don't have it, but Anne Carl has been on our Policy Committee. I just wanted to clarify if he is or will remain or not to put you on the spot.
Would love to stay where I am, so hopefully that works.
So Anne will get added officially?
Okay, yeah. You didn't have her on here, but good. Thank you.
Carrie, I'm happy to help Sam and be able to co-chair and do the, you know, add my stuff to help around.
Okay, great, great.
Love that.
Anybody else who would like to change something? Alright, so then if there's no other changes, we'll leave those who are already on a standing committee or working group as they are. Raina, were you able to get all those changes? Alright. I'm going to call a vote. Are we all in favor of the changes that we might please say aye?
These two?
Ernie, oh yeah, sorry, Heather and Ernie. I talked to both of them. And there's no, you don't have to go on a committee or a working group, no pressure. But if there's an interest that you have, this would be a great time to tell us. So I'm, I would be interested in either Communication or Policy. Okay, how's the policy looking there?
It would be great to have. Alright, yep. That would be great.
Great. Alright, so Heather Law would move on to Policy. And Ernie?
My interest is in Finance and I'm also able to, to help with the Fundraising Working Group if the members of that group are looking for additional outside participation.
Okay, do you want your name officially on both of those groups?
I'd like my name officially on Finance and I'm ready to be officially on the Fundraising Working Group after the current members are consulted.
Okay, very good. Alright.
Eager and diplomatic.
I'll jump in with both feet.
Okay. Alright, just going to make a note here for myself.
We might have a change.
Yeah, if all these people are joining Finance, I can switch over to Buildings and Grounds. Sounds like we need more people.
Okay, Lara will move to Buildings and Grounds. Excellent.
Not leave you with anybody besides yourself with negotiations?
John Williams is going to come on Negotiations.
Okay, I missed that. Okay, great.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And myself. Yeah, for Negotiations.
Yeah, okay, okay, Ryan. I was thinking maybe.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, so Ryan will also go on Negotiations. Great.
Great.
Awesome. Okay.
I just wanted to thank Corinne for all her contributions and hard work on our committee.
Thanks, Elliot. I'm happy to just also, you know, continue out with the athletic thing too, as needed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor of the slate that we just put together, please say aye. Any opposed? Alright, thank you all. Looks like a great, great rearrangement. Okay, at this time, I think we're going to discuss the Code of Ethics. If you have the paper copy, it's in there. Right at the back inside now. So normally we sign a paper and in this day of saving paper, I thought perhaps we could just take a quick look at this again. If you haven't seen it yet, take a look through it. In the past, we've had everyone participated in signing it. But I thought perhaps we could just do an affirmation, which would be raising our hands and saying we agree to it. Is that alright with everybody? Alright, I'll give you a couple of minutes to review it.
Every question as we're reviewing it, I know there's a couple of us here that have either parents or friends or partners that work for the district. Can you, my husband being one of them, can you clarify what, I think outside of negotiating for a teacher for someone that is supporting staff? I can't vote, but is there anything else I need to be cognizant of to step out of?
I would say anytime, you know, his name is raised, you would excuse yourself for another reason. Okay, can't think of what that might be, but okay.
I think when, when, when he first took the position, it was mainly around support staff. I think it's food services.
Contracting or support staff. I'm a little good, Raina.
Hi.
Hi.
What's the question?
As Matt works for Food Services, what do I need to defer from voting on or being part of?
I think that would be something that you would look at as an on by case basis. I think my husband was on the board for years. And so if, if something would directly financially, then just refuse yourself. Okay, I'll ask the, I guess, everybody in the room that if there's something that you feel like I need to step off of, please make me aware.
The two things I would think about would be any issue with a coworker.
Okay.
You know, even if it's not between him and the coworker. And anything to do with the support staff unit, yeah.
Okay, sure.
And those are the two key things. If it's another food service worker, it's just best you're not part of them.
Right, right.
Even if it's not, it's probably best you're just.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And since Anne is bringing that up, I'll do the same. My wife is the SEL teacher at Wes, so if you keep me honest, if I need to step out of any votes, let me know.
My wife's just my boss, so if I have. It's already called my boss.
We can send the recording, the clip to her. Alright, are there any questions about the, the Code of Ethics for Vermont School Board members? Alright, Harry, now can we raise our hand and affirm that we will uphold the Code of Ethics to the best of our abilities? Alright, thank you, everybody. So thank you, Raina. We'll put that in the minutes. Should it ever be a question? Thank you. Now we are going to approve the meeting schedule, the posting places, and the newspapers of record. Currently, we post to the Vermont Standard and Mountain Times. You know, the posting, those are the posting. And the posting places are town halls, the MBSU bulletin board website, and the school campuses within the MBSD. Okay, everybody noticed, notes that there are two changes when we are not on the second Monday because of holidays, second in the way. Also, I think if we do them together, we'll also approve the committee meeting schedule. If that's alright, we vote at the same time. Has the same posting places, the same newspapers when necessary. These are also on the website, so if you're ever wondering, there's a great tab for the school board on the website. It has anything to do with our minutes, meetings, upcoming meetings, members, the, what we saw here up there, that's on that same tab. It has all that information. Alright, is there a motion to approve the meeting schedules of both the regular meetings and the committee and working group meetings?
I make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Okay, thank you. And we have to, you know, a voting delegate for statewide health insurance. Adam, can you explain the very demanding job that it is? It's never been called upon.
I don't know. I don't think they have my email address or phone number.
I'm sure Raina sends it to them.
But in my last year on the board, I will happily serve out this last year doing this role.
Alright, can somebody nominate him, please?
I'm nominating.
Yes, my last name.
Okay, any other, any other volunteers for this extremely busy position? No? Okay. All those in favor of appointing Adam as our delegate, please say aye. Any opposed? Right, um, you know, this.
I got it.
Can we figure out whether this is a last year or not? Alright, we need a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. Alright, all in favor of adjourning this part of the meeting, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. I'm going to call the second meeting to order at 6:59, the monthly meeting. I believe we have a very strong forum here. Thank you all. And I'm going to ask if there are any amendments to the agenda. And I'm gonna ask if there are any amendments to the agenda.
I have a resignation letter.
Okay.
To that.
Alright, and I'm gonna, um, suggest that we put that resignation, um, announcement right after we approve the minutes in the, in the agenda. Thank you. At this time, we have an opportunity for public comment. There's beginning at the, at the beginning of the meeting, there's a time and there's also another time at the end. So if you think of something during the meeting, you'll have a second chance to bring that up. We do ask if you're online that you would raise your hand, either digitally or, um, with your own hand. Um, and state your name and town and residence for the minutes as well. And, um, if you're here, sometimes we have a sign-in sheet for those that want to speak. Just gonna go over the, this once per year is that any member of the public has, can speak. If you're speaking, once speak, twice on the same topic, we ask you to wait for, uh, until all others have had the chance to speak. Uh, we do appreciate order and decorum. And we do not, uh, allow any maybe personal impertinent threatening or profane remarks. And, um, I think that's enough said about that. So, at this time, are there any members of the public who would like to speak? Yes.
My name is Bill McDonald. I live here in John, one of Ben's neighbors, up on London Hill. I'm probably one of the very few people here tonight who voted against the bond election. I would like to have voted for it because I'm, I appreciate the value of public education. If we had better schools in the South and Midwest, we wouldn't be threatened with another Trump, uh, four years in our, the lives of our democracy. But, um, uh, one thing I would like to ask the board to consider, and this is very radical. I'll admit that off the top of my head. Rather than spending a hundred plus million dollars on a new school, have we, in all honesty and seriously, considered the possibility of merging with one of the three neighboring school districts? Hartford, um, Lebanon or, or Hanover and sending, say, uh, ten through twelfth graders to one of those schools using our elementary schools, perhaps the one here in the village or maybe Crossford or if the, uh, problems out there have been rectified. For K through six, seven, eight, whatever his shelter is, uh, most, most, uh, reasonable. Now, this is radical and a lot of people will be opposed to this immediately. People don't like to lose their local schools and, um, and I, I can appreciate that. I had three boys who went through the system here. But a hundred million dollars for a small school system that graduates less than a hundred kids a year and Killington pulls out, which I guess, and what I read is possible and maybe even probable. I don't see how the taxpayers are gonna be able to survive this. Uh, I'm retired, I'm not really living on a completely fixed income. I have my Vanguard portfolio that has been doing pretty well the last twenty years. Uh, so I'm not in crisis financially myself. But when I talk to other people, uh, they're really worried. We're already faced with what, an eighteen percent increase on the state taxes this year? Is that what it is? Eighteen percent, I, that's what I. So, folks probably know more about that than I do. But, um, a hundred million dollars, oh my god. We gotta think of something else and, uh, okay, my proposal here is not saying I wanna do this. I'm only suggesting it as something to seriously, and I emphasize the word seriously, um, consider, not, not some pro forma thing. So that's, uh, those are the thoughts that have been on my mind. I'm sure there are other alternatives too, you people know more about that than I do. But, um, the cost is just really getting out of control. We're gonna have to figure something out that's more efficient. If, if we didn't have a high school, how would we save a hundred million dollars plus? But think of the economies of scale. We'd be able to, uh, not have to run the whole building and everything that involves. But the use of faculty more efficiently is something else that would be, um, you know, to the advantage of, of those of us who are concerned about the costs of operating this system. And I'm led to believe by some conversations I've had with other people that, uh, some people have, uh, some kids, some children have been taken out of their school system by their parents because the courses that they wanted weren't offered here. This one woman I'm thinking of in particular, I won't mention any names, but, uh, her son was on a technology track and they didn't have the technology courses here that, uh, Hartford or, or Lebanon had, one of the other, I forget which one it was, but perhaps our kids might be exposed to a broader curriculum, um, if we merge with one of the other larger school systems. So, thank you all for these hearing me out.
Thank you.
I don't know how, how feasible our proposal is, but I think it's worthy of serious study if nothing else. So, thanks everybody.
Anybody else for public comment? Yes, please.
My name's Kelly Witten. I live here in Woodstock. And I would like to, if possible, get a policy, a copy of the policy as far as security at the sporting events.
Do you have concerns specifically or something?
Paul West did it for a number of years. When Paul West stepped down, I was voted in. And I did it for a number of years and you could call it great. Shillinger, we had a fistfight breakout over there on the soccer field. I was the very first one on that field. Greg was right behind me being second. And Craig Moser was there, his boy was on the team and he got spun around. And Craig came up behind me, not knowing who I was, spun me around, saw who I was, said, oh, I'm sorry, Kelly. I said, yeah, you and the rest of the parents need to get off the field. Leave it up to the umpires to take care of the issues between the suits. And it went away. That quick and that easy. Then all of a sudden I get told, oh, you're not covered. When Robbie Bush was still here, he made a phone call to this building and told them that I am covered under the town of Woodstock as being the town constable.
Thank you.
If I did get a copy of that, I'd appreciate it.
A copy of the security plan?
Yeah.
For?
For sporting events. I mean, I've done all the, we did all the high school, any event there was. It was worded back then that if there was a, any money exchanged, there had to be security here. Whether it was a yo event or a dance or anything where there was gonna be money from the students to a faculty member, there had to be security.
Okay, thank you. Alright, anybody else for public comment? Uh, Lauren Lemieux.
Hi, I'm Lauren Davie Lemieux. I live in Bridgewater. And, um, I wanted to, uh, after this bond vote, I wanted to express sincere appreciation for the time and effort that has gone into the new build proposal, um, and along with a lot of other no votes that I've talked to. I wanted to make sure that our no was heard not as a no never. But that I hope you see it as a serious, genuine request for, a plan B. Um, it's my firm belief that there's never just one way to do things and, um, I've heard a lot of, um, well, this is the way to do it now. Or we just pay more to do it later and I wanna express my hope that our community can come together to, um, come up with something else to do. And so that we're not doing it later for more money. We're doing something different. I would like to see more options on the table and a lot of, uh, I'm expressing this as something I've heard a lot of the community express as well. Thank you again.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Weissaki?
Uh, hi, thank you, John Weissaki, uh, resident Killington. Just wanna chime in today real quick, sort of following up on Lauren's point. Uh, thank you Lauren for your comment. Today, I received a survey, uh, via Garen Schmale, uh, Woodstock High School from the building committee, uh, talking about the vote, the bond vote, how people voted, so on and so forth. And I think one critical missing question in that, which really follows back up to Lauren's point, was perhaps the first question in the survey should have been, would you like an option? Should we examine an option? Should we consider a renovation versus just a straight build? I feel as though voters have spoken and came out and expressed their feelings as it relates to the bond. Everybody wants to do something, we need to do something clearly. The question is, do we need to spend what's gonna be whatever the, you know, we'll call it ninety-nine million, although I think it's gonna be a lot more than that. Or, or should we be asking the public if the resource should be focused on a renovation plan at this point? Seeing how the vote on the bond was a vote down. So, I would ask the building committee and any of those folks involved to perhaps send out a follow-up survey, asking the most pertinent question, which is really a jumping off point of, should we look at a renovation moving forward or should we only look at a build option?
Thank you, Mr. Weissaki. I would say that if there was room in the survey to fill in those comments and I would hope people would do that.
There, there, it wasn't a pointed question though. A very simple question of an A or a B, I think would give the board better direction versus how did you vote, which I also think was kind of probably an inappropriate question. Did you vote yes or vote no? Think that's why we vote in private. So, again, I just feel as though the, the first step in the vote or the survey should be how would, how should we proceed as a community, as a, as a SAU? How do we proceed? Um, you know, we have limited resources. Obviously, you folks are putting a tremendous amount of time into this effort and it seems as though if the taxpayers have spoken, then we would wanna follow suit for the desire of the majority of taxpayers. So, that, that's my comment and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? From the public? Yes.
I have just one more to add, love that. Who oversees projects when they're done? When there's additions onto the school?
You're sitting right next to him.
So, when the senior solarium was built, did you oversaw that?
I did not.
That's what I'm getting at, is who oversaw that?
The only reason I didn't, I wasn't here.
Right.
For me, uh, whoever was the building manager, I think it was Bruce, he was then responsible for that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it should be, there's, it should be more than just one person so that when one retires, somebody else takes over. They have a handed tool, so they know where things are. And I've been told that underneath the senior solarium is where this subject plate has collapsed. You can't build on top of the subject line. And I'm not farting at you, Joe. I'm just asking that question. Why would we not have blueprints? As a superintendent, have them here in this building or have them somewhere where we get a new superintendent, we had one before and piles were kept. Did they get passed on? Where are these blueprints for all these additions and why don't we have a shop class in a woodwork, working class in a automatic panic shop like we had when I was here?
Alright, thank you for those questions.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, I think then we will move into the next item on the agenda, which will be, one news that I've had there. Uh, the reports, starting with superintendent.
Thank you, thank you everyone for being here tonight. My first point that I wanted to share in terms of, um, what we've been accomplishing in the last, um, months since our last meeting. Wanted to talk about the event of February fourteenth, when we did have a serious concern regarding safety of the district and of the middle school, high school. Um, I wanna share that I believe it was because of our strong relationships with our families and students that we were made aware of the situation. Our strong relationships with the Gustav Police and Windsor Sheriff's Office um, really provided us with an opportunity that we didn't want a real event to practice with, but we really were able to execute the policies that were in place, uh, from board regarding safety and security as well as testing those relationships and abilities to act quickly in response to a challenging situation. Um, I think that at the end of the day, myself, Principal Smale, students, Principal Tancredi, uh, social emotional coach. I remember we did a review of how we operated during that time and I wanna thank everyone for following the processes that we do have a lot, um, outlined in emergency operations plan as well as the policies that have been put in place for the board. So, um, I think those relationships were really key elements in making sure that we were able to effectively address that situation. A piece of work that we've been working on for a long period of time and we're excited to bring it back online, so the Educators Institute. Uh, many years ago, we had, uh, an innovation conference where we brought in speakers from all over, from all over the country, talking about topics of education. Um, part of our current strategic plan talks about sharing our expertise, uh, at a local and national level. Um, we are looking at June nineteenth and twentieth. We have approximately ten educators who present on a variety of topics, topics, including artificial intelligence, social emotional work, uh, creativity. Um, and we are offering that, um, that event to not only teachers within our district, but teachers outside of our district. So, it's an opportunity for us to really show and showcase some of the expertise of our educators, um, and have others take place in that learning.
Alright, thank you. Any questions, Sherry? Thank you, Sherry. Um, and the next report is from, uh, Ralph Adamek.
I'll stand over here. Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Rafael Adamek. I'm the Director of Technology and Innovation. Um, and tonight, uh, I just wanted to share with you, I should revisit, um, some enrollment data. So, at our last board meeting, Anna raised the question about, um, are our long-term enrollment trends over time? Um, and so I just wanted, I think in the board packet, you'll see two different data sources on that shows that trend over time. And just wanted to make a couple of observations. Um, this seems like a very straightforward and easy question to answer. How many students do we have in our schools? Um, but there's a lot of nuance and subtlety and it's much more complex. Um, so the first graph that you'll see is data that is generated from, um, in, inside, um, uh, our school district. Um, it shows sort of a peak back around two thousand and nine. Um, and then a more recent peak a couple of years ago, um, and then some dips after that. It's important to note a couple pieces about this data. We added public pre-Ks to our schools in two thousand and eighteen, so those have been folded into these numbers. Those did not exist prior to that. In two thousand and eighteen, um, the state changed the mechanism through which they collect all their data. So, so our data prior to two thousand and eighteen, um, I cannot attest to the quality of it. Um, it is what we recorded, but it was a completely different collection mechanism. Um, the other piece that's important to remember is that, um, the numbers reflected here do not match our ADM numbers, which affect our finance. The amount of money that we get. Um, because we get money for, you may remember, it's different waiting for different students and we get money for students who aren't even new in our schools yet. These are our private pre-K students. So, in the last couple of years, we have had students attending private pre-K that we get some funding. I did include, the other graph that I included was from the Agency of Education. Um, I just wanted to put this out because, um, this is what the Agency of Education has on their website right now. You'll notice that the, the shape of the graph is pretty similar. Um, If you go to the site and come to the data point, so those numbers are very different. And so the agency of education is using really different methods to calculate this. I've been in contact with someone there and. There, right now, they're including students who have unenrolled during the school year in that year's calculations. So last year, they have us at 80 more students than. Ourselves had because 80 students are enrolled over the course of the summer. So. It's just really trying to shed some light on to how these different enrollment numbers come to be. The overall trend is that. Our enrollment. Is not as high as it used to be, particularly 10 years ago. And we did have a peak during COVID as well, and we're going down from that peak. But we have similar enrollment to where we were on 2017, 2018. And and that's the general pattern that we see. So I hope this answers your question and gives a little bit of context to to some of those.
Yeah, thanks for doing that. It's interesting, the different weights of. You know, the fact that it sounds like prior to 2018, it's like comparing apples to oranges if we're. Changing weights on how much a student is considered and. That the state is even changing their ways of of counting students. So it's. It's helpful and and not at the same time.
Ryan. Do you know if there's a specific reason for? The reasons behind the state changing their formula or over the month? And how it benefits them in particular, because why else would they do it? And does it benefit us the same way?
Yeah, that makes me a question better to vast of the finance sort of group. I my understanding is that. I think that's what you're asking, right? The most recent change that occurred?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why they shifted. How they view, I mean, that students are students.
The people we're grateful for, but we're talking about people.
Yeah, yeah. I think, right, recognition of Mrs. The Vermont Legislature, this work goes back to about 2018. When they said, you know, not every student. It it requires different levels of resources to educate different students, right? And they put them in different categories. The most recent changes have to do with students living in poverty with English as a second language learners. The weights for four year old pre K students were doubled from point four six to one. And then the biggest change came around sparsity of school districts, recognizing that rural students, there's more transportation. And so if you're in a school district that's more spread out, or you're a small school. Then those students get more weight than students who are in cities who are closer together, where there's more efficiency.
And my understanding is that. This was a correction of an estimate they were making. This is more empirically based it more on empiric data that they collected perhaps since 2018. I mean that. So they're using their data. I think when they first did this, it was. A supposition of or estimates.
So Raph, so I understand. These charts that you make, is it true that prior to now, they were ADM? Not real bodies. And subsequent to now will be the the new acronym, the five. They're asking him.
These are bodies, these are bodies. Yes. Yes. So these are, yes, great question. So yes, these are students enrolled in our schools, students who who. So, yeah, and this is not an attempt to try to translate that into the to the ADM or long term. Just wanted to mention that it changes based on those those changes to the funding form.
So this has tuition students, I think is the big change. When we talk about. Long term weighted ADM, it's just in district students, right? Versus this would have the. The hundred or so tuition students, so yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Sure, you want to say? Yeah, just to kind of build on where, so there were two groups that studied how we fund. Education in Vermont. One was that the University of Vermont. And the other is Nate Levinson, who came in and did our scheduling work. He presented to us last June. And really what it identified for us, and I will confirm that. Costs more in our region because we have to, we're not like Hartford where services are right there. And often the bigger cities, Brattleboro, Hartford, Springfield, Burlington. Have greater access to those and greater resources, and we are always trying to create those resources and paying for them ourselves. And I really appreciated that, you know, that recognizes that we, you know, we bring resources to families. We don't expect them to drive to Hartford or Springfield. And so that brings a cost to the district. And so this new waiting algorithm really shows that, yes, you are paying for whatever support services, resources. That you might have in a larger city, and that's how we've benefited.
Sure, thank you.
I have a question for us. So I know. What you said, starting with 2018, it includes pre K. So. If we wanted to compare it apples apple with historic years, we'd have to subtract the pre K population. So. In 2023, it will be 915, not the thousand. Right. So. That is a pretty significant decline over time. And I know we got the COVID bump. Are you seeing anything like? Campus by campus, or maybe in like the K through eight versus nine through 12? That might show different rates of decline, like, is this just a? Full district wide phenomenon of like, we're losing population in every. Every one of our towns at every age level? Or are we actually seeing something if we dig into the data, like more kids are going to private high schools? Like, have you seen anything like that?
Yeah, so we we do collect the data on students who who sort of, there are points when there's like transitions. And so we have looked in the past at students who transitioned to private high schools. In the years that we've looked at it, it's a very small number. I haven't really looked at it much, but it appears, I think it's a trend across the state, across, you know, the the region. I think it impacts all of our schools. I think there's. Antifull stories of when Wes had, you know, over 300 students and. And and yeah, so so I think it's. Across the board more. There certainly are kind of transition points, so there may be more. Is that answer your question? Yeah. Thank you.
Josh?
So let's do a second off. It kind of followed what I saw for a graph that was on that channel three ran a couple of weeks ago was a very similar graph. It was looked almost identical to what ours looks like on there. For the statewide. So it's, to me, it looks like it's the state as a whole, where we're kind of following the same. Decline that they are seeing too. Looks pretty similar, at least.
Thank you. Thank you, Ralph. The directors do need support services. Shannon Kalninsky.
Hi, I'm Shannon Kalninsky, and I'm the director of student support services. I see a lot of familiar faces in the room, but I also see many new faces. My office is right here in central office, and I have. The unique and exciting job of working with students and the educators who provide. Special education services, students who have IEPs, which are individual education programs. I also work with the NTSS team, that's multiple tiers of systems of support. Those are students who receive interventions. And also students who are on work with an educational support team. That's what we call our EST plan. And students who are on a five year workman who might have another type of disability. All of these interventions and specialized instruction and accommodations are designed to help students. Access their education on a day to day basis. And have successful outcomes here in school. I get to work with a resourceful, creative and flexible team. Of occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech pathologists. Special educators, para educators, school psychologists, nurses, and our counselors across all of our buildings. And we work with the principals and the educators in those buildings. One of the things that is pretty amazing, we're talking about enrollment. And for special education in the last year, we've actually tripled the number of students who have tuitioned. Into our district because of the reputation. Of the special education department. Students continue to come at the beginning of the year. In the middle of the year, and that makes that team, that resourceful team, very valuable because the budget's already done. And in IEP, you can't wait until next year to fund what's into students IEP. So they're constantly flexing and responding to the needs of the students on a day to day basis. And they're a great team to work with, and I welcome you to contact me at any time if you ever have any questions. Again, my office is right here in this building.
Thank you, Shane. Any questions for Shane? All right. Thank you very much. And from the director of curriculum instruction and assessment, Jen Stainton.
Hi, everyone. Jen Stainton, soon to be Jennifer Suttle. So if you see that email or name, just so you know, that's me. I wanted to start with saying that I am sort of. The person that works with Shana with all students. I work at the universal level. So curriculum instruction and assessment for all students. And Shana works with tier two and tier three students, students with intervention needs and special education needs. And so we work together collaboratively frequently to serve all students. My office is in the high school and middle school. I've been in the high school, middle school for 15 years. I was a science teacher and department chair before I became the director of curriculum instruction and assessment. At the very top of my report is a link for you. Anytime you have a question about curriculum, let me if you go there first, the SU website. You can also send me an email if someone interacts with you in your town and has a specific question. Please feel free to reach out to me. I can answer them as best as I can. I want to speak to two pieces that have been happening over the past month. First was our in service day, which happened last Monday. We had teachers working with Julie Brown, grades five through 12 on literacy. We had teachers pre K to four, working with Patty Kelly on math. We had teachers doing letters training, which is a training that everybody did last year, 70 plus hours worth of literacy training. Happened for teachers that hadn't experienced it yet. We had nurses working to focus on student supports in our crack program was out and about, also engaging in some. Really robust professional development to make that program strong. When it comes to literacy, something that is very exciting that I just wanted to speak to is some words gotten out about our program here and how we've developed it. And Sherry, Julie and I presented to the Indiana Department of Education. About how we use teacher voices and teachers' experiences to really build our program. And so we're becoming a model for other states. So I just wanted to. Thanks for your time. Yes, I don't know if this should go to you or Shana, but I'm hearing some mumbleings about a pilot test for how to include parents in early readers. And I personally am excited about that and wanted to thank the two of you and Julie Brown for spearheading that because. I've reached out to ask for support and it turns out that the support's already on its way. So thank you all.
Yes, we are going to also have some additional pieces on our report card, elementary report card next year. So families can access those at any time as well. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else have a question for Jen? All right. Thank you very much. The director of finance and operations. Jim Fen.
Good evening, all. Jim Fen. Briefly. I pay your bills, take care of your pleasure, make sure we have money. That's what I do. The rest of it's all flow. I spent a lot of time working with Ben over the last year on the new bill committee, Ben and that team, and. We'll keep working at it and get it done. One of the things that I brought, I'm bringing this evening, and if you have the. Agenda, you saw. Joe and I have been working with this bit, who is our. School board in Vermont, school board insurance trust. And actually kind of disappointed and disillusioned with the way they serviced our account. And last year, after telling us for six months, we were going to have a 7% increase in the premium. They offered us a 23.9% increase. Which I screamed and carried on about, got it down to 15 and a half percent. But I put it out the bid. And we're working with Fred C Church. Agency out of Massachusetts. They do about 8% of the independent schools in New England. I use them in Fall Mountain, where I came from. Very successfully using McCartigan Mountain School. And again, I've reached out to them. They put together a package for next year for us. That's $9,000 less than our current package, and that's the max, and we're still negotiating. It equals or exceeds our current coverage. And so I'm looking for you. This is significant enough decision. I want you to make sure that you're on board. Will no longer be with one insurance company, will be one insurance agency. But, you know, workers talk will be through MAMIC, something might be through Liberty Mutual. They're putting it out to their group of carriers that they use. And leveraging one against the other to get a good price. So that's one of the things that Joe and I have been working on, and we'd like to put that in effect for July 1st.
We should probably clarify, we're not talking about employee health insurance, right?
We're not talking about employee health insurance. That unfortunately, we don't have a lot of choice in because the state has told us. We're got to go with them.
So how big of a budget line item are we talking about for this insurance?
$253,000.
Is the $253,000 the 15.4% increase that we were going to be paying?
No.
How did the percentage numbers? Jive with the?
The 253,000 is $9,000 less than we're paying this year.
So is that number the 15.4% increase or not with the 15% increase? It's what we're paying today.
That's what we're, we're paying $260,000 today. And we're going to pay 252 next year.
I think what Bob is asking, when did the 15.4 hit this year?
July 1st, this past July 1st.
So we had to take that one.
We we took that. We budgeted settled.
Grab the 260,000, the 15.4% increase.
Yeah.
Now, next fiscal year 2026 will drop to the.
Will drop to 252.
You're missing a number.
I don't know what we're. So I budgeted about 240 for this year, Bob. It costs us 260.
Got it.
Next year will cost us 250. Next year will cost us 252. I budgeted almost 270 because I had to budget, still thinking about this.
Okay. Go pretty serious.
Does that, is that clear?
It has.
Okay.
I'm sort of at a loss as to whether we should make a motion so that we can discuss this. Or can we continue discussing without the motion on table?
It's, we're discussing a report, so I think we're okay to talk.
Okay. For those of us that don't know the details of this higher level question, so it's not health insurance. What insurance coverage is this involving?
If you open the insurance proposal that is. In your. Document, it's property. It's automobile. It's general liability. It's violent event response educator legal liability, excess liability. Crime, cyber, workers comp. And flood insurance.
And so theoretically, thank you for for answering that. And I've opened it up and was going to read it out loud. So thank you for reading it for me. My brain just took a pause.
Well, I'll ask questions. So I assume that it's apples apples, like the coverage limits are the same, very or very close.
The coverage limits are the same or better.
Same or better. Thank you.
Was there anything specific? Or is this just across the board, they're raising the rates? Was it nothing specific about our district? That like our history or anything that would make it like our cyber thing that?
I think. I think that they overreacted to a couple of claims that we had. If you remember, we had water fight freeze at West. It cost us $45,000 last year. And we've had a couple. Workers comp claims that they they put huge reserves that ended up being insignificant claims. And so I think they overreacted to some of these things because they didn't have the right people in place to. To react correctly.
Okay. So do we know where the savings were? Like, I'm looking at the thing I see the green on. The workers compensation.
But that's, that's.
Is that the only place that we saved? Or is it, were there like savings in every category all the way down through?
I don't get a breakdown like this from this bit.
Okay.
I get a lump sum and then I get workers comp.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't have this type of break. The savings is the MAMIC one, and it's so they took their price and they gave us a discount on top of that. That's what you're seeing there.
I was just curious on how the breakdown was in comparison.
Well, for me. Whatever we're paying because of our claims and stuff is why. The revenue's gone over increased. I know you're talking down to the 15%, but then. When they add that 15%, that's what made the people you wanted to switch to. Able to say it was 8,000. So were those guys already that much more expensive than what we had? And what our claims have been brought us to that level?
No.
Or what makes it comparable? Because that's half of the 15%.
I think floods. Snow, other things, and Visiter only covers Vermont. Liberty Mutual covers the whole country. So they have the ability to absorb a regional district issue that Visiter doesn't have. And so I think that's part of it. I think that they switched actuaries. Actuarialists, and so they recapitated some numbers. So I think it's a. And so they recalculated some numbers. So I think it's a multiple things that I'm sure some of it was because of our claims. Because our claims were about seventy-five percent premium. They liked to seem around sixty percent of premium, but it wasn't our claims exclusively.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Visbit comes with a lot of opportunities for grants and other services such as the PATH program for your employees. Have you looked into the value of those and losing access to those might impact the budget?
The PATH is through behind, and so where that remains. And ten thousand dollars is savings is easily, easily equal to the grants we get. So I'm not concerned about those. If you have ever experienced the team from Fritzi Church, they have three school safety officers in their office. They come out and they do workplace ergonomics. They do all the same things. They have a larger staff that covers Hampshire and Vermont than Visbit has. So they offer some of the services. That's one of the reasons I went with them instead of somebody else. Because they're, they're in the business of insuring schools. That's it.
So you said you've used these, you use these in your PATH, you use this company in your PATH.
I've used this
Cardigan? Okay. So Cardigan, what was your, Fall Mountain?
Fall Mountain reading school.
So Cardigan I know is a private
Yeah.
school. I don't know about Fall Mountain.
Fall Mountain's a public school in New Hampshire.
Okay. So when they were your public school, that's apples to apples. Cardigan's kind of hard. How was the, like, how does coverage, how did, what did you see as a administrator from your teachers and your administration staff, like in comparison to what they had before?
The teachers have no interaction at all with this group of insurance unless they have a workers comp.
Yeah.
And I have found my experience, and we're going with MAMIC on workers comp. MAMIC is like the Cadillac of workers comp insurance companies. As far as I'm concerned, they have one of the best teams I've ever worked with. When I was at Fall Mountain, we were with Liberty Mutual. I struggled with them a little bit. I switched to MAMIC the next year. And they're just top shelf. I can't tell you enough three things about dealing with MAMIC. They're supportive, they're responsive, they do what they're, they need to do for two reasons. One, they want to keep the claim down. But two, they want to make sure that we're doing our job so that we don't get the same.
I have a point of order.
Yes.
Do, if we want to approve this, do we even need to? Do we need a motion or just tell them informally to carry on, get the best price?
But when do you need a decision?
I would like to, I have a notice that I have to give to Visbit pretty quickly.
Okay, so you want something tonight?
So I'd like something tonight. I don't care if you vote on it or you just, you know, by a, you know, group say yes, please move forward, and I will. Potentially, I, I want you to be aware that I'm doing this before you do it.
Yeah, it feels like it's within your discretion. We all had a chance to voice our concerns.
That's, I was going to say the same thing. Only thing I would ask is that you continue to try to negotiate it lower while you have the, while you have the time to do so.
I've worked with Evan before. I will keep working on that, yes.
Does anyone on the board have any concerns about Jim making this change? Alright, Jim?
I have just one question is, are these introductory rates that they're going to really raise up in the next two years? I mean
He knows better than to do that.
Okay.
He knows better than to do that. And the only other thing I wanted to share with you, because I think it's more and more important each time we, we meet, is since I did a report in December, we've received another sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars in grants and gifts that have nothing to do with the new bill. So we're just shy of four hundred thousand dollars on those things this year. And, you know, we don't talk about that enough. You know, and in a thirty million dollar budget, that may not be a lot, but it does allow the extras that you don't pay for that are not part of, of the tax. And so I just want to make sure that we keep talking about that.
Thank you, Jim. I think we have agreement that you should move forward. And anyone else, anyone who comes up with another question is welcome to email Jen. Sorry. Thanks for all that you do.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, we have two student board members. We have Aiden Kiovella on the screen and Owen Corsi here in person. So I welcome you to give your reports.
Yeah, I'll go for it. So hi, new people. I'm Owen Corsi. I'm a junior at the high school. I run the twelfth century. I'm on student council and I do this. I'm a student rep here. So a couple of things. The high school's craft program, which is like our agriculture focused program, is, well, this is a little update. It just finished a exchange in Bavaria, Germany. So they were doing a cool agriculture life sciences focused trip over there. And then we're going to host, I think, five or six German students here next week. So that's really cool. I've always thought that's a great program. Janice Bobble and Abby Tasciata do an amazing job. And this is just another example of that. I think a lot of students, to be honest, were somewhat disappointed with the results of Tuesday's bond vote. But I think people stay positive and are always grateful to Joe and the entire Buildings and Grounds team for working so hard to keep us running over there. And then the superintendent student advisory group is organizing with, which is a group that works with the SUZA on various issues, but also organizes this summit every year in the fall. So they're working, we're working with student leadership clubs from so far four other high schools in the area. And so we're going to coordinate with them and have them involved with an event in the fall. And it's been great to see sophomore and freshman members, underclassmen, really stepping up to plate or to bat and doing good work there. So that's it. Aiden on the screen.
Alright. Alright, hopefully you guys can hear me. I'm Aiden. I'm also a junior and a student representative on the board. Like to be outside. I'm a ski instructor, mountain bike instructor. I am part of that, the superintendent student advisory council that Owen was just talking about. And yeah, I've been going here since, to the, the middle school and high school since I was in seventh grade. My report's kind of going to be a little brief, kind of following up behind what Owen was talking about. I think that crunch time is upon us for students as they get ready for AP exams and SATs coming up. AP exams are in May and then SATs are in Mar- on March twentieth. The school facilitates this test then. On a look, so students are really again ready for that, preparing with them. I know Head of Vinaida and Ms. Sullivan Justice are kind of lean, leading a SAT prep course that students are part of. So students are getting ready for that exam coming up. Winter sports have come to a close in the past few weeks with a lot of sports teams going toward, participating in statewide competitions. Congratulations to the boys varsity Nordic team for winning the state championship title. And also most, just recently, the girls' snowboarding team, the varsity team just won the state title as well for the second time in a row, I believe, if I have my facts right. So congratulations to both teams. With the closing of winter sports, spring sports are right around the corner with teams participating in captain's practices and also preparing for the season ahead. And we're excited to see what our spring sports season has to offer. Congratulations to Agnes Kardashian and first alternate William O'Bard, who won the, our kind of regional Woodstock poetry out loud context, contest, which was held organized by English teacher Martha Perkins and held on February sixteenth, which was a Friday. The audience really were captivated and engaged in the performances of students who performed their poems. And we wish the best of luck to Agnes Kardashian, the winner, as she heads up to the regional competition. And the, I'm also the head, kind of the, taking, taking the lead here with the Code of Conduct Working Group. And we've been doing a lot of good work with that. Currently, we're getting input from students, educators, teachers and administrators about the, what current rights and responsibilities they believe they have and what rights and responsibilities they want to have in the future and think they should have. And our hopes is we will kind of work through this information and synthesize it, kind of have it the heart of our new document. And yeah, exciting work coming in the future. And yeah, that's my, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Owen or Aiden? Well, thank you. You want to give us some good insights that we need to know? Thank you very much. Alright, we are going to, at this time, what we're going to do is have a time for each board member who wishes to speak about the annual, the, the annual meeting and so forth and the, the bond vote. What I would, what I would like to ask is that we do not ask questions of who's ever speaking. We just listen to what you might be hearing in your communities, as some have already expressed here in public comment, or you know, if you have suggestions on directions we should be moving in as we move forward. I think whatever we do next, we really need more participation from the full board in your own communities. And as we embark upon a new plan, we would like to hear from each person who wishes to speak. So
You want to go over the results of the voting?
Sure. So Ben, do you want to go ahead and do that?
Sure, I can put those up. I just think I just need someone to make me a presenter.
As he's pulling that up, I'll just say that Ben and I have continued meeting together with a few other folks. And we have constructed the letter that went out to all of the communities and to you regarding our thoughts after the bond vote results came in as well as the budget vote. And we also worked with a team to put together a brief survey to gather as much information as we can. It was very clear to be said in specific. Tell us whatever you want us to know. It is anonymous unless you choose to make it not anonymous. So whether you say yes or no, it's up to you to choose that you want people to know that. And you know, that also offers you opportunities to get involved if you wish to or to receive further information. So that is in the process of going out. Sam is actually going to be sharing that with the listservs, the forums and all of those things tonight. The principals have put it in their newsletter. Some of those have already gone out, not all of them. The staff and the board has received that, that survey as well. So that being said, go ahead, Ben.
Sure. What's on the screen now? And I apologize, this is kind of small, blow it up here. But I've taken the two budget articles. One, the, the top line is from last year. And the article six is the, the budget item from this year. And what I want to point out here is really to make a point about voter turnout, right? As you can see, and I've got some, some kind of numbers on the bottom where we crunched this. But voter turnout this year was absolutely massive. And I want to, and then this next line is the, the bond itself and the voting results. And again, I'm going to crunch some numbers here on the, the bond results. But the, the first item, let's see, is the, the budget results itself. And I think we, we should take a pause here and I'm going to switch my screen here to go over to a news item that ran in, on BPR five days ago. And as anyone's kind of followed budget news around the state, I mean, we are incredibly fortunate to have the community support that we have in the school district. I mean, to come out of, to live around the state and see that a third of school, our, our peers are, you know, not over the hump, ten school districts have delayed their budgets in addition to these that have already failed. So to get the kind of community support that we have, to have a sixty percent support of our school budget is absolutely phenomenal in this, this year. It really goes to show the level of commitment that our, that our communities have to our students, to our educators, and to letting the people who work for us do their, do their job. And just to kind of break that down, you can see at the town level here, the, the votes on the budget itself. And we had the budget pass in five of the seven towns and by a pretty wide margin in four of those towns, right? Barnard, you see, it passes, the, the margin is twenty-five percent. Pomford, fifty-five percent. Reading, twenty-one percent. Woodstock, forty-one percent. Plymouth, it eat down, one percent there, right? And then you see that it, Bridgewater is a fairly close vote, twenty vote margin in Bridgewater. And then Killington, you know, had a, had a much larger margin of voting the budget down this year. So to kind of, then the next thing I want to cover is the, the bond vote. And you can see the numbers here and I've, let me just zoom out so you can see what this is in reference to. So this line, so that is the votes for, against, blank, got a surprising number of votes on both of these, both items, the budget and the bond. And the total voter turnout, you know, are really massive on these items. So the margin of defeat of the bond was three hundred and forty votes out of a total of over thirty-five hundred. So you're talking about a margin of less than ten percent. And that comes out to forty-five percent for, fifty-four against, and you know, one percent blank there. The next thing I wanted to focus on was voter turnout. This is kind of where we started. And that's, you can see that I got a line here for FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five. Starting with Barnard, a three hundred and twenty-eight percent increase, going from eighty-three voters to three hundred and fifty-five, right? Bridgewater, a hundred and eighty-six percent increase, right? That's almost triple for those, you know, doing the percentages. Killington was interesting. Killington, they typically have very high voter turnout. Last year, they were the, as you can see from the slide here, the highest voting in, I'm sorry, the second highest in raw numbers. Looks like Woodstock out, outvoted Killington by just a little bit. But kind of at peak voting already in Killington, it looks like. So they only went up by about ten percent. But everybody else, at least double, if not triple the voter turnout.
Add Readings, that's the highest we've ever had for voter turnout in our town.
Three oh one.
Ever.
That's interesting. And you guys were the champions in terms of the percentage. It's like you had fifty-nine percent voter turnout. I mean, with Stowe's bond failed in, I think it, was it in, in the fall this last year? Maybe early winter? They had something like eighteen percent voter turnout, right? So just to see the level of engagement of our, of our communities is really, really cool. Do people care about this stuff and that the work we do is important to a lot of people? I think the last thing I wanted to, to show here was just since the, the bond vote is kind of the talk of all of our towns, I wanted to draw the board with some perspective of other bond votes going back about five years in Vermont. And you know, to, to, for us to come in at, you know, forty-five percent voter approval, our first time out of the blocks is, is pretty significant for a, a district of, you know, a combined district of, of, of seven towns. You can see with Newske back in twenty nineteen, I talked about that project a lot. They're a single town school district. But they were able, they got their, their budget, their, their bond vote passed. It's a pretty, you know, small number of voters, but by twenty-eight votes, right? So a four percent difference to get their sixty million dollar renovation back in twenty nineteen. South Burlington, nowhere near as fortunate. Twenty twenty, they tried to take a, sorry, it's not a, a trillion dollar bond. It's a two hundred and ten million dollar new build project to their voters and it got crushed, twenty-one percent to seventy-nine, right? Then Slate Valley didn't even publish numbers in, that, that same year. They said it just failed by a large margin, right? So who, who knows? That was a sixty million dollar renovation. Harwood in twenty twenty-one, fifty-nine million dollar renovation. They got about twenty-five percent of the vote for that. That was tough times. That was during the pandemic. I think that played significantly. The next one I wanted to show was an interesting story. Fairfax, Bellas Falls, they've had their share of troubles. They went to bond four times. In twenty seventeen, they went to their voters with a renovation project. It got voted down. They tried again in twenty nineteen, got voted down again. And they took some scope out. I think there was an auditorium that they pulled out of the scope and they were able to get their the, the bond approved by eleven votes, right? Now that was, that was so close that the, there was a kind of an opposition that happened to that in the town. They said, look, one, one more time, right? And so it came back. And I think the criticism was that the, the school board was not as transparent as they could have been. There was some, some mail out, some ballots that got mailed out. But anyway, they came back the next year and got it passed by a, a fairly comfortable margin in terms of, you know, how these things go, sixty-six votes, right? And then Burlington, as we all know, passed their, you know, their hundred and sixty-five million dollars, at least when it went to bond. I think it's at like two hundred and five million now, seventy-six to twenty-four. And Stowe, the one I just talked about, you know, didn't come anywhere near as close, thirty-six to sixty-four. So just a perspective of other, other bond votes around the state that have hit the So just a perspective of other other bond votes around the state um that have hit the news recently. And um I guess I just wanted to kind of give everybody the information. And again, um thank anybody who may be listening uh for the incredible participation and the uh support of our annual school budget, which is really appreciated.
Could you go, could you go back up to the very first charts, or could you email this?
Yeah, sure. Why don't I give it to Raina and put it in the minutes?
And tell us again what these two.
These are the actual budget articles from the last two years.
Last two years?
Yeah. So article, it was last year was article two. We had about a twenty-six million-dollar budget. You can see that was a fifty uh, excuse me, sixty-eight percent. Um not the same kind of economic times. You might remember from our budget discussions last year, that we were keeping the tax rate flat, right? So you still had the CLA that was um in play, but this year there was far more, I think, um you know, attention and and um um you know, Plymouth, for instance, uh you know, we're we're seeing their their um increase to their um to taxes go up by about thirty percent this year. Woodstock, twenty-five percent, right? This is significant headwinds to be able to pass a budget. It's the reason that we're seeing a third of them fail around the state. So, sorry, can I answer your question?
Yes, sure, Ben. Okay, question. Yeah. Um so for the statute to um say that the bond vote has to be co-mingled, I mean, is there a reason for that?
Sure. Let me pull that up. Um well, I don't want to let show you the statute, but that's essentially what it says. Um in the weeks leading up to the uh the vote, Raina was just kind of reviewing the statute and the applicable procedures and um coordinated with our uh school district uh attorney and confirmed that, yes, in fact, for uh a the Union School District with several towns, that uh the um ballots are to be co-mingled before they are counted, right? So uh we do not have uh numbers for the town level.
Well, I'm just curious as to the rationale, if you can do me know.
I I haven't looked into the legislative history. I can, I can get all the gas, I mean, but.
And that was back in June of twenty twenty-two, I think.
We don't know exactly. That's like the latest change to that law.
Okay.
Um but if you look at the other, like, looking at the other laws, like, um you know, like, other matters that unified school districts can um can decide on, your articles of incorporation. Uh you you could have town-level results if if that's what um your articles say, and I think ours probably do. Uh but when it comes to bond votes, those happen to come in.
Probably to protect from, you know, pointing out certain towns and saying, if only you people were in that town and voted in directions, probably, but because we we were all, as we know, pushed into the merge. And some people really, you know, crushed the whole state. There were many towns did not want to do that, but did it.
Yeah.
So I think they were probably trying to protect from that kind of them-us type of thing.
He's, I mean, we could, we could get just as angry about, you know, the budget, I suppose. I mean, that's the only I'd say in in response to that.
Right.
You know, but uh, I mean, I don't know if we want to unpack this. This is, if anybody wants to make, and I can pass this, send this around. But you know, with the the margins that you're seeing here in in Barnard, Pomford, Reading, Woodstock, you know, I um and then the the relatively low margin by which the the bond failed, three forty. It it seems likely, we don't know, who knows, there could be something really erratic, but it seems likely that the bond probably passed in a majority of our towns, right? And that if this were uh an electoral college, presidential election, you know, we'd be done. But it's not. We have our our rules, and and this is the the system that we're in.
All right. So at this time, I invite board members who'd like to speak about um anything that's on their mind regarding the vote. Any suggestions to consider, as well as what you might have been hearing from uh constituents in your towns uh as we forge ahead into making uh next steps. Uh Brian?
Yeah, I'll go first, but that's all right. Uh I would implore the board to, and first of all, Ben, to the group that's been working on this for all the years, it's been in progress. It it's wonderful. The amount of work you guys do on it is incredible. Uh with that said, what I'm hearing a lot from, I represent Bridgewater, but I talk to a lot of folks regardless, is uh a lot of the people that voted no against it did that based off the taxes and the impact on their wallets. And for a lot of the people in my community, they didn't see the benefits to the increase in tax. Um a majority of them below the poverty line or less income than uh the average in this district. Their kids aren't going to go to college. They're not going to afford it. They wonder why we don't offer trades. We look long-term at schools. The best way, in my opinion, to keep enrollment is to give the kids that go here, like myself, a trade that will allow them to stay here. Then their kids will be here. That's why I'm here. I'm third or fourth generation, go through the school. Uh and through my family's property, I'm allowed to still live here. Uh financially, there's no other option in any of these towns for me to live in, other than it works out for me through my family. I'm okay with increased taxes if it benefits me and my family down the road. I support the community, and it's not a direct benefit to myself. But we live in a community and district that has the serious shortage, as does the entire area around us with trades. So a thought of mine that would, although add a trade or a tech center to a bill will not decrease the price. It will add value to the to the folks that can't afford the academia and the college options. Um and we could, if it was an opportunity as a board, you know, to engage more with our community, there's plenty of local businesses that would love to help support stuff like that as possible. Um we could offer courses. I I talked to Chief Green, and he was, he said he could give a rundown or a pilot of a firefighter one EMT course, which is something that you could test out for once you're eighteen. But you could take that to any state. Every state needs it. So even if you want to go to college, I I think the trade doesn't affect anybody coming to Woodstock for the academic purposes. It just gives options to the kids that aren't going that route, a better chance of being successful after school.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh I see Corinne, and then Sam, and then Anne. And then the rest of you get a chance.
Thanks. Um I wanted just, it wasn't what I was gonna say, but put a bunch of underlines under what Ryan just said. I I think that's um something I've been thinking about for years and sort of uh heard about and always wondered sort of what the opportunities were at the middle school, high school. But um to the extent that uh we might be looking at tweaking a design, um yeah, I think that would be amazing to look at those opportunities there. Um what I was gonna say, though, is um a couple of things. Um the folks that I have talked to or have, you know, communicated with me about their no vote or have have been, you know, similar to um, you know, some of the folks we heard in public comment where uh it it seems like there there is not a confidence in, you know, the plan that was put forward that it was not too fancy or not too big. I mean, that wasn't exactly what those comment, the public comments were, but but um I think in as we move forward, um one aspect of um the sort of information um the the communications needs to be, I think, uh directed specifically at at those questions. Um and and at the same time, this, you know, more sort of information, again, this is it's a long history, you know, leading up to where we where we were last week with the vote in terms of, you know, the board um and community conversations around our options. Um a- and the information sessions that I went to or other gatherings where it was discussed. I mean, I think when folks had a chance to ask questions about, you know, the renovation option, for example. There was a chance to have those conversations and to sort of understand, you know, get to an understanding that like financially, that that doesn't, you know, most say that 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 doesn't make sense. It's going to cost us, you know, almost as much, and we don't get much out of it. Um but if you haven't been a part of the conversation, it's it's hard to get it it's it's hard for people to understand that that um I guess either a renovation or sort of a different design has been explored enough to be a real option on the table, you know, and I think that's what people are saying. Well, I want to sort of see options, you know, we were, we were given, we were given a lot of information about this one option that as a board, we uh you know, we judged was the best way to go um, you know, over over the years. But not everybody had all that information, and so what they got was one option. Of course, that's what a bond vote is, right? You're voting on, you know, this is, you know, a certain amount of money for for this option that we're giving to you. You're not, you can't choose A, B, and C, you know, when you're going to bond. But in terms of um moving forward, uh more, uh maybe more engagement around what is the reality of those options? And one thing I wondered was um, you know, some people say, are saying like, well, couldn't it be, you know, we want a new school, but does it really have to be, you know, ninety-nine million? I don't, uh, you know, an open question to me is, what would it cost, you know, for um I don't know the reality of this, whether they'd want to do it, but you know, for example, our current architects to do a real, you know, low-budget uh low-cost sketch of what, what could we do to pare this down? You know, obviously, it takes a long time and a lot of money to sort of do a thorough design, but what could we do? What would we have to cut out, right? To come up with something that was, say, seventy-five million or eighty million, you know, it's still a new school. What are the realities of, you know, the sort of trade-offs that we would have to make as a district? Because one of the things that um you know, Bryce would say is, look, um if we look at redesigning the building, trying to cut it down, we're looking at cutting programming. So fleshing out, you know, some of the details of that might just give people a little better context um as to sort of what the range of choices might be. Um and finally, I just wanted to ask the question of uh, you know, how soon you know, timeline, how soon, if if we decide as a board, we want to bring this back to a vote or bring something else to a vote? Well, I guess the question is, if we wanted to bring this back to a vote, the same bond, is there a sort of uh, you know, we have to wait sixty days, we have to wait six months or whatever? And um the secondary question is uh is there any time in which, if we felt confident and it's the way we wanted to go, we could bring this back and still be on the same timeline for building as we we had been, um assuming the the choice to support the bond, you know, flipped in in the re-vote?
Do you want to answer that question?
No, I don't think we should answer. Thank you, Corinne. Um in the interest of time, let's try to try to uh not repeat things that Ben said unless you mention it briefly. Um and try to keep to maybe at two minutes, because there are nineteen of us. Uh Sam?
Uh hi, I'll try to keep this brief. Um uh also, would like to underline some of the things that Brian said about uh tech options um coming from a parent of us that you could really uh uh enjoy those, and Hartford Tech is wait-listing most people applying these days. Um so just saying that, um I think one of the things that, you know, I think doesn't get discussed enough um is the amount of um conversation that needs to be done on the state level. Um I really think it was great that in Carrie's letter that was talked about, um but you know, right now, what I feel like is that we all need to be petitioning our state representatives and senators to reignite the pub, the, you know, funding for new builds. And because if they, if that funding still existed as it used to, um I think that that the a bond for the amount that would have needed, been needed, plus estate funding um would have passed. You know, I think it's it's crazy. It's, I hear a lot of, oh, our taxes are going up, but then we're not getting any financial help from the state for this new build, you know? And I think especially as a giving town from Act sixty, you know, um what we really need to be doing is getting state representatives in these meetings and really getting our state representatives to be fighting for this. Because at this point, I I've been heard from more than one town uh town person that that it's really, they need, the state needs to step up with financially, and we shouldn't uh be putting a bond to um to the entire taxpayers. Um there was a meeting over the summer, not summer, uh early fall, where state representatives came and spoke to locals and local business owners, and they um, we sat in the library. We had this meeting. Certain people from the community were invited, and I was invited as a business owner. And um, you know, to ask about how the flood was affecting our community. And uh I couldn't help it, but put on my school board hat. Um and I said, you know, I'm, I know this is not why you got, folks are here, but honestly, you know, if you really want to think about things to help our community, you're currently sitting in one of the, one of the second worst-rated built s- schools in Vermont. And we need a new school, and we're, have a community that's hurting from floods, you know? And I I just said that, and I, and they were like, oh, yeah, well, we'll consider that, of cour-, I mean, of course. But I I really do feel that that is what I've heard from a lot of people is, you know, um where are state representatives fighting for this money? Um yeah, that's what, that's my two cents.
Thanks. Anne?
Hi there. Um first, want to just underscore, thank you so much to everyone who's put in a tremendous amount of work to get us to this point. Um I want to say, as a representative from Killington, as we already discussed, uh the votes are co-mingled, but just looking at the budget vote, I think we have an indication of how the town of Killington probably voted. And so I just want to say that I'm really looking forward to engaging more with folks in my town to really understand and listen and hear what their concerns are, bring them back to this group, make sure that people's concerns feel answered and uh that they feel really brought along in the process, because I think that's a lot of what people are saying, is that they you know, joined the conversation maybe late in the game, but at the same time didn't felt sufficiently brought along. So I'm really excited in the next, you know, year or whatever the time period is to uh really listen to the folks of Killington and and bring those concerns to this group. So thanks.
Thank you. Anybody, um you can just sort of go around the table if you want, or pass, so you can come back to Elliot, anything you'd like to say?
I just think it's important to have as many listening events as possible and to hear perspectives from people, because I think there are some things that we're not thinking of and to hear the impact of of this. And and something we haven't talked about is like, we try to put this in terms of, you know, what your taxes are going to go up for a year, but in some people, this is like a major investment that they would be doing over a period of over a period of, you know, thirty years. And that's something that maybe all of us don't appreciate. So I think hearing from a lot of different people would probably be, and you've already, that and the survey, and you've thought about the question. But I think listening events and having more of them and no judgment at the time.
Uh huh. Uh these are not going to be well thought out or spoken. Um I certainly did not put as much into this as other people have, and even still, I was I was pretty dismayed. Um we've heard the students were dismayed, the 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 teachers were pretty dismayed as well. Um I love that we're doing what we normally do. Um our leadership has done such a great job of turning the surrounding like, okay, we've heard what the voters say, you know, there's still some concerns. Let's open it up to everybody, not only the board, not only the students, not only the staff, um but the full community. And I just implore that the folks in the community that did vote no, we want to hear what you have to say. We need you to step up. We need all these ideas to come out. I also agree that trades tech would be an amazing add to this. I know at least one student who's looking to actually go out of district for trades and tech. Um I have some ideas spinning in my head that I would love to to bring to the table for that. Go out of district for trades and tech. Um, I have some ideas spinning in my head that I would love to, to bring to the table for that. Uh, uh, again, for my first responder hat, we had a, a credible threat within the past month. Our current campus is not set up for clearance of hot and warm zones. Um, I don't think that we could get this current ca- campus up to speed. If we had a campus that was built for modern day threats. Um, uh, the ability to clear that campus quickly and safely would be so. Effective for keeping our students safe currently and also being able to get them back into the building quickly and safely. Um, that our current campus is just deplorable because it was built in a time when we didn't have. Bombs and dongs and everything else coming into our, to our student spaces. So, um, cheers again to our leadership for, for being so open and, and leading us so well, because I was. Uh, pretty frustrated that night and then the next day we had an email that said, all right, we're going to start taking in comments and not only again from, from us. But from the whole community, I think that's so a model. So thank you for leading us in the way that you do.
Thank you. Then, are you going to pass?
Uh, I mean, people have kind of heard a lot from me. Um, I guess I'll just say that, um, I'm, uh. Just in, in the feedback that I've heard so far, one commitment, um, that I'll take is, um, it's. We need to be, one thing I'm incredibly proud of that we did through this process was transparency, right? Was being as open and as communicative with our communities as possible, and I think we should absolutely continue to do that. Um, but the thing that I want to take is to be as clear as possible on the financials, right? And that's always been my goal. But you can never do enough on this stuff, right? Um, and the one thing I would say that it's a little bit of regret is that we started this as a board. More than a year ago by passing the tax impact cap policy. That got completely lost in all the, the cycle, right? No one was paying attention to the fact that we had committed. To cutting the tax impact in half, right? Just out of the blocks. And I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to be a whiner, but at the same time, it's like, that feels significant and we can do a better job of communicating.
Thank you. Adam?
I, I, I'm not to put an overly positive spin on it, but I think it's incredibly encouraging that the voter turnout that we had. You know, in this year, I think particularly coming from ready to see that amount of voters turn out to vote. Um, this is what a democracy is, right? People, um, come to a vote and have their opportunity to express themselves. I think, you know, the challenge, um, with a venture like this is that this conversation's been happening since, what, two thousand sixteen? Getting, um, volunteer buy-in in a, um, a state where our population's low is incredibly hard, right? We can look at all of our first responder departments that are volunteer, volunteering to be on a school board. Um, we don't get people's final voices until a vote essentially, right? Um, I'm, I'm really proud of the effort that our, our committees did leading up to this to really be transparent. And do informational setting sessions and get out and communicate this. So it is a bit frustrating that despite all that, there's still comments that where people are, you know, this is, you know, that. This is it and this is all you're gonna, you're giving us just this final product. Um, but I think at the end of the day, you know, continuing to do what we're doing is with, this is a conversation that needs to continue. And it's not going to go away. Um, and that we've, the, the dialogue continues, right? And I think the more dialogue, the better. And I, I'll be open to how we can further that dialogue, you know, outside of board meetings in ways that feel productive. Um, and are limited in terms of the feedback will bias and that you're, you clearly want it to be this. Rather than, um, there's opportunity for people to dial, to dialogue about it.
Thank you. Heather?
Yeah, um, I'd like to emphasize the fact that I think there are a lot of people who think that no is not an expensive choice. No is still an expensive choice. Like, I don't think people understood, okay, so to carry this. Bond will cost about five billion a year and to keep what we have will cost about four point eight. Like, I think that information is, is not clear. And so they think no is, is the affordable vote. Like, that's not an expensive vote, but no is still expensive. And the other thing is, I think there's a perception that this is a lot of money for something vanilla, like just a high school. I love what you said about tech and that several other people caught on to. The idea in Vermont that it's tech or college is really outdated. Some of the best high schools in the nation. High Tech High and Bergen County Academies, they do tech and academics in one building. So if we can market more things like craft, craft is brilliant, right? It's right here, it's an academy program. Or you can take in the tech room. And so I think if you could, could show people how expensive it is to vote no. And you can put some pizzazz on what you're offering more than just a building to go to school in. But a building where you could like do tech and college together and hear some really beautiful programs. I think you could move enough people.
Yeah, one of my further thoughts on the vote Texas stuff is. Um, if you plan it out down the road to save money for the taxpayers. If there were certain inventions or projects that could be done by our woodworking shop under the proper supervision, you know, a school. Build for the kids, buy the kids type idea, where when we, you know, three years from now, we can see with the. Influx of students that we're now attracting with our new school and everything else, that we're going to need another science room. I don't see why our woodworking shop would not be able to plan that and that year, the class built a woodworking shop. And I know it'll help tie into the community because for the next fifty years, really drive by like, damn, I built that science room. Uh, my dad talks about planting the trees in the eighties, so I know that. Uh, but yeah, I've already spoken, so.
Thank you. Can I just ask not a, a question? Are, are tech programs regionally funded or state funded?
So that's what I was looking up while I was, when I was then, so we are not able to offer a tech program by statute. We had to become part of a regional tech center that understands how the grants work in order to get the money. They had the state of Vermont determined like twenty years ago. That we would command all the money to offer regional tech centers, there are fifteen of them across the state. And so all the money and grants available to tech centers are, for our region goes to Hartford, so. That's why we no longer have the, the garage and the woodlark, because we are not able to offer that level program. We have to buy in, we're part of the Hartford Collaborative. So we, we had a woodworking shop that, luckily because of lack of enrollment by students, we're not signing up for those classes. Um, but in terms of becoming a tech center because of Vermont statute, we cannot do that, so.
Can we do any of that in a club setting?
Right, and, and the reason why that is, is it's so expensive and I think Ben showed us a slide of the cost to over, offer those programs. As well as to find teachers who are certified in those areas, that are so extremely challenging. I know that's Hartford's challenge has been finding licensed teachers in the tech areas. They can make so much more money if they're actually out in the field, but the cost of. All the work, I know we went through that with the new lab, having the right air system, having the right supervision, having a. I mean, the not of regulations around a more tech-centered classroom as compared to a traditional classroom. The costs are so much higher, but I just, thank you for that clarification and we really cannot offer. Competition to Hartford Tech Center by statute.
Right, the most you could do is a few programs, right? Like, you know, like a path, it's a great idea.
That's a great way of addressing our community needs in a more hands-on way, but in terms of building, uh, Jen?
I was just going to say, um, we do have, um, a program, RC Three, which allows students to access internships and experiences in. Local businesses, um, so we're trying to come up with creative ways to still allow students to access that. And we do offer bus rides to and from Hartford twice a day for our students so that they can access the Hartford program. Um, but we can also get more creative, so keep those ideas flowing, but.
Right, we've had kids apprentice at Shackletons, we've had students apprentice at different, um, uh, you know, at the. Um, equates of sugar hanging program. We've offered different ways in addition to Hartford to pursue different kinds of careers.
I think I technically did an apprenticeship for Mrs. Rorale as a class. Um, if I think back on that, my senior year, um, quick follow-up question, Sherry, um. So if we aren't by stature able to offer tech classes within. Um, Woodstock and ha- have to put funding towards Hartford. Does Hartford then have to take a certain number of students from each school district that? Then is paying into the Hartford Tech? Like, do they have to be, okay, well, you know, what's the, this school district pays this much? So we need to accept this percentage of students or is it, is there anything like that?
Yes, there is, and you know, I'm on the Hartford Tech Center Board and proportionally, uh, Woodstock has been pretty well represented there. We've always had students, we've used our, and in fact, we've taken some numbers from other camps, so our students, so. And I'm going to look into the concern around waitlisting, I've not heard that. I know students always apply have a first choice and a second choice. I think ninety-five percent of the time, my understanding is when we send about fifteen juniors and fifteen seniors. Everyone that, that is appropriate for the program and there's certain definitions. Receives at least their second choice, has been my experience, if not their first. And there's some programs, you know, like building trades, which. Again, the numbers, it's competitive, but there's always a second choice.
Yeah, yeah, awesome, thank you. And I just, I'm sorry to be a second.
Can you follow up at the end, Sam?
Yeah, uh, no, it was my, my hand was raised to speak again on the bond vote.
Um, yes, yes, after everyone has had first chance. Thanks. Um, Bernie?
It's eight thirty-one and I have nothing to add.
Uh, Josh?
So, a- as someone who is openly opposed to the bond.
Really?
Surprise, honey.
It, part of it comes down to, uh, there's not very many kids that I graduated that still live here. And that's not just a trend for my class, that's a trend for every class going forward. There are not many kids that I know that were, once I graduated, still live in Woodstock, partially affordability, can't afford it. It is what it is, we all know that's an issue. That issue is only going to be extra, eh. Be made worse, we can't even say the word right now, so made worse by. Adding this bond, because you're now going to increase taxes again, which is going to increase property size, which is going to increase, you know. The, the whole spectrum goes in correlation with each other. You're, you're taking it and making it harder for people to stay here. So that's why, you know, Ryan's idea with the tech center was, and I know we can't take by statute do one, but that would be a great movement. Because now you're going to offer, hey, you may not want to go to college, you may want to be an electrician. But you can step out and we can have a partnership with, you know, whatever, a Shaw electric, for example. And they're going to go, hey, we're going to let you go through and work underneath us, you have a job, now you have a reason to stay here. You're not going out into the open world going, well, maintain and I don't want to go to college, now what I do. And he, and a lot of them, it's leave. And that's, that's a problem that I've been against and that's partially why I'm saying, until we figure that problem out. The problem, you know, we're never going to fix the school issue here, like the building would be built, but there'd be no longevity, no sustainability. The other part to the, to it comes as. We, as a, as a, as a society, we are combining in Vermont, like. You saw the map earlier, student populations are declining, the, we're having aging population in the state. So that's kind of hard, a hard sell to say, we're going to spend this kind of money on a decline population of students. We also have a state ed fund that's not funded well, that's a state problem. The state does not have any skin in the game, so. As I've talked to Ben about and Sherry, and Carrie and Sherry and everybody on board about, is we. We're, we're asking these people to put out ninety-nine million dollars without a guarantee that the school will outlast the forty-year bond. We don't know that the state ed fund says, we got to make cuts and based on statute, we have three schools that. In our area that are already tech centers, so they're not going to shut those down. And I mean, I know our goal is to be a hub, but until the state has some skin in the game with that thirty percent, like committed to pay some of this. There's no guarantee from the state and that's kind of been my, my opposition. And I think we can work hard to force the state to make that commitment. Now we have something to go back to our board voters and say, the state is committed to us.
Thank you. Uh, John?
Uh, I don't know that I have much to add to what's already been said by others, other than, um. Underscoring finding ways to, uh, creative ways to. Uh, disclose the, the value probably for everybody.
Thank you. Katie?
I have nothing to add, um, just that I, I second everything that Ann Carl said from our, from our little corner of the district. Um, but nothing else to add.
Thank you. Laura?
Um, first, I'd like to shout out Marlena and the fundraisers and all of the funds that they've been able to raise without having. The community say, yes, we're going to do this. Um, and I hope that. People they might be able to raise funds from in the coming year will understand the long view. Um, and not say, oh, well, it's, it's done and, and you know, that's it, we're not going to pledge any more money, but hopefully they'll see. The same things that Ben was presenting about how, you know, this is how, kind of how it goes. Um, and continue to be able to raise funds and I just, I'm just so amazed, but I, I've heard some people say, oh, well, the amount that's been raised is. Nothing compared to what they're asking taxpayers for, but also considering she, if I correct me if I'm wrong, she works part-time. And she's only been at it for a year, you know, so this is, I, I thought that was pretty impressive, so I wanted to shout that out. Um, and then the second thing is any, uh, any no vote that I have heard the reason behind. Has never been no because we don't want a high school in our town anymore, you know. Uh, I think everybody, yes and no, still wants to have a high school here. I, um, I would hate to see sort of an education desert happening in the middle of our state if. Our high school fails and we start tuitioning our students out. Um, I live. Way up the mountain in Bridgewater and I can't imagine how long my student would have to be on a bus to get anywhere else. So, uh, I'm really committed to them being able to go high school. Um, and I think that we can all start with that comment round and open there.
Thank you. Matt?
Um, trying not to repeat anything others have said, I had some notes that are not in a particular order, but, um. I first just want to thank everyone who has worked so tirelessly on this behind the scenes for many, many years. Um, eight years for some folks, um. And so I, it's just so impressive to see what, what you all pulled off and what, what we pulled off in terms of just the engagement and the transparency. And the work we've done with the, um, the architects. Um, and I think some of the positives are that the public is truly engaged and the numbers have shown that. Um, there seems to be consensus that we need to do something and it needs to be done soon. I think one of our challenges is that, you know, we really needed that momentum four years ago. When, when we were coming off the design of the new build, instead we were interrupted by the pandemic. And one of the things I think that, um, that did to this process is it may have. Made some people feel as if the design was sort of being handed to them because they weren't part of the process. Um, because we ran that process almost, you know, from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen when we, when we did all the work to engage the public on the design of the building. So I, I think the message, and I think you guys have already sent this to some of the members of the public, because we want to hear everyone's feedback on how to proceed. We want to hear about what changes and improvements we can, we can make. I, I just heard one very last minute. That, um, they, they thought it was absurd that we would put special ed on the second floor. And I had not heard that before, um, but that, you know, you've got kids who've got to go up to the second floor who are in special ed, who may need. Hand, you know, handicapped accessibility, um, that was one that came in from a constituent. Um, I think we just want to take, you know, everybody's different opinions into account. Um, and hear what their proposals are. Um, appeal to different parts of the electorate to get them excited about the vision versus feeling like they're being handed something or given something. Um, to them on high. You know, I think if we can address the enrollment issues head on and, and present a building. Um, that is viable with or without the growth. Clearly, I think if we brought this back to the voters next week, then the state would bring in thirty percent match or something, I think it would have passed, so. I think if we need to prioritize where we put our time, it's, it's, it's nudging the state. I, I think having the kids' voices come in towards the end was really, really helpful and I think we could even do more of that. Um, my daughter's here at the high school, in one day, four of her classrooms were shut down and four, four classes were disrupted. Um, my daughter's here at the high school, in one day, four of her classrooms were shut down, and four, four classes were disrupted. She's in AP Language, and they couldn't use half the class because the heating pipes burst and there was water on the floor. So it's, it's actually impacting education right now. Kids who are supposed to be learning curriculum for their AP tests are not, because they're moving around and sweeping up and mopping a floor during class just to find space to, to conduct the class. And so, I think e- even a picture a day of what the kids are experiencing would, would send a thousand words, um. I, I went to the girls' senior night basketball game, and the, the girls went to get changed in the locker room, and the locker room had flooded, and they couldn't use it on senior night. So, there's just, there's just things that the public aren't really hearing about. A kid who was recovering from an accident and had to be, use a wheelchair for the first time, and, and they, he tried to use the, the elevator at the building and got stuck, because the elevator broke. I mean, these are horrible, you know, things that are happening that people should hear about. Um, and then I think just talking up the positives of our school to bring out more community support. You know, when you start hearing people suggest that we close our schools and send them to other regions. I, I think what's lacking is the fact that we are a unique, incredible pro school. We have more APs offered than a lot of schools, we're placing kids at really, really, really good colleges. Um, seventy-five percent of our kids participate in sports, and, and a lot of that would would be gone. I mean, if we, if we sent half the kids rolling under Hartford, you would not have the same, uh, opportunities. So, I'll end with that, I could keep going, I know that was more than two minutes, thanks.
Maybe you can go on.
My experience was intense disappointment. At most people that I talked to were intensely disappointed. Because of the no vote. Twenty-four hours later, maybe forty-eight hours later, I felt a lot of positivity and momentum. I've heard some people who voted no, who I know voted no. Um, wanna help out, wanna like, get involved and call, you know, their state rep and write letters and get, and maybe help out with some of these working groups. I think maybe s- I heard this from somebody, but, um, listening to Matt, it made me think, maybe some of these listening um, work groups or listening events could take place in the locker room. And some of our, the classrooms that the kids sit in all day. Five days a week, for how, you know, how many hours of their lives. Um, but I also wanna say that the school is the heart of the community, and it's really, really important that we keep our kids here. Keep them here, and give them the environment that they deserve to have.
Thank you, Lydia. Uh, Bob?
Yeah, I have two things. First, I don't think there's a chance that most of the people that voted no, voted no for any other reason than cost. And maybe there was one or two said they voted no because special ed was on the second floor, but I don't think that's the case. I think it was cost. I was a little disappointed that the, the survey, the four-question survey went out so fast without any input. And I think we should add to it, or send another survey out that asks a simple question. If you voted no, what number would it take to change your no vote to a yes? And not even, not just throw it out there, just say ninety, eighty, seventy. Stop at seventy, ninety, eighty, or seventy million dollars, okay? That said, there's no way you're gonna change the design and cut twenty-five percent out of the school, there's just not. Even just the cost of redesign would cost a, a ton. Which means, there's only one other option, two actually, more funding. We've talked about the state, that's a hard nut to crack, I have no clue how we do that, and it'll take time. The other is gifting. And while we've done some job so far on it, I don't think it's nearly enough. I think this community has enough history and wealth. And even the surrounding towns, if you add in all the people who have bought second homes in the last five years. There's gotta be a way to take the answer, let's say, the vote flips at eighty mailing. That, if you counted up the people that answered the survey, and say, my vote would go yes if it was eighty million, or seventy million, whatever it is. At least that gives us a target. And then go out there and fundraise, and talk to the state, and say, this school's not happening unless we get this much money, because you're not gonna do it any other way.
Thank you. It's had two minutes. Um, I wanted to give Owen and Aiden the chance.
Um, yeah, I, I think, uh, Matt put it pretty well, that's as good as a perspective as you're gonna get, um. There's, there's endless examples of this, like, I was in my calculus classroom the other day, and the average temperature they had uh, measured throughout the day was ninety-four degrees, because the heating was completely out of whack. Uh, so that was pretty brutal, and then our line classroom was, uh, half submerged and reaped a blue. Um, so there's weird things that happen every day that I think, we, on the community, they might understand more. And it's good to, you know, as we have been, but it's good to remain sensitive to, these are extremely high costs and sixteen percent or whatever it has a theme, uh, it's harder when there's, when you're earning less, or when there's less to go around, so it's good to be aware of that. Um, but I think it's a worthy investment, if I could vote, I would vote yes, but, um, yeah.
Aiden, did you wanna add anything? Ask him again, um, okay, Elliot?
Another comment about, talking about the state, I mean, maybe the state, I know they're talking about sort of redoing the whole formula, which may actually turn out to be worse, but in, in any event, the, the whole idea of, um, dividing by the CLA is just is just a horror, and, and especially how it'll, there's no cap on what the difference can be from one year to another, and that's the thing, that's really, I mean, again, the school budget, it's a school budget pass, but we're not by six percent, but our limit's thirty percent, when you start dividing by the CLA, and it's just, that's unfathomable. And it's, it's gotta be smoother, it's gotta somehow have some sort of cap. And, and that has to go back to a legislator, has really nothing to do with our local.
Um, Josh?
And I, I just wanted to tell you, say that, Ben and Bob, like, I appreciate your point, it was a hundred percent on point with what I, my issue was, with the, with that to begin with, is, right now, when you look at our district, and I, I've kind of talked with Ben about this, is that our non-homestead rate, it is cheaper to be a non-homestead than it is to be a homestead. That is completely messed up. It, that, it is broken, and it is, that, that's one of the things that need to be fixed. It should not be cheaper to own a second home in a town than it is to be a resident of a town. That, it's just, it's crazy to me. And I think that's, at the heart of the entire issue, that would be one thing that would fix. And if we could put some of that weight onto that somehow, whether it's the state, whether it's some initiative that we decide we come up with here. I don't know how that's possible, but maybe, but something where we can lessen the impact on the, the homestead. And whether that be on the non-homestead, or whether that be on state, like, something fundamentally has to change in order for that to work. And like you said, I, I think the idea is, you said, is it step ninety, eighty, seventy? And you figure out a way to lessen the impact, you would have chances of having this pass with flying helps, but, and the current model.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody on Zoom that wants to make another comment? Uh, yeah?
Add on to something Lydia said, um, I think it would also be great if we had a listening session at a sporting event. Uh, one of the comments that came out at the Bridgewater informational meeting was, um, you know, people talk about the school being the heart of the community, but it, you know, isn't, like, I am embarrassed to say I'm on the school board, I've never been to any sporting events. I know, in my defense, even when I was in high school, I never went to any. But I have been to the theater several times, so, you know, it's a thing, but, um. And then several people raised the point, you know, that they went to this high school, and they were on a team, and they just didn't feel the community support them there. And maybe something we could do as a board is try to, as a board, go to sporting events and, and try to boost community spirit.
Tom, you will have a chance to speak at public comment time, which will be, hopefully, not too far.
Sam, if you wanna say anything further?
No, um, Matt covered what I should have waited and let everyone speak, so, yeah, Matt covered a lot of what I wanted to say, so, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I guess I'll sum it up, because I don't usually say too much, because I'm supposed to be impartial, but I will say, I wanna say this. I said, of all the people who worked on this and put mega hours into it, I don't think anyone put more time into it than Ben. Ben was the front man. Front person at every, every event, um, he, uh, made the numbers understandable. He, um, mostly kept his cool, and, um, under some great provocation at certain meetings. And, um, he really, um, has gone far, far beyond where I think all of us have gone. It, it's been a lot of work, it's been a lot of time. Um, my granddaughter said, oh, do you have a meeting tonight? And I said, yes, I do have a meeting, she goes, you always have a meeting. And I said, that's true, I go out a lot, um, but I think that as we move forward, I was disappointed, of course, like everybody, but when I looked at the actual numbers and saw that it was a three hundred and forty doll, half a dollar, three hundred and forty vote. Oh, with thirty-five hundred voters, I didn't feel as bad as I did once I saw that. And I thought, you know, there are things we can do on our side, we can look at a lot of these ideas here, we can go back to the board and you know, sort of triage them, we'll take in the information from the surveys. Um, and hopefully people will answer it, and not just say, oh, they don't listen to me, we wanna hear from everybody. We'll go out into the communities, and we'll do what we need to do, to see how we can move forward with a new school. Because no matter what, I am convicted that there is no way renovation is an option on a building that's been determined to be ninety-seven percent depleted. So the only option is to get a different building. And so I put it in the newspaper, and I'll say here, I'm committed to the next three years to do and work as hard as I can as I go into my retirement, in June. Um, to, um, to see that we, that our community gets what they deserve. My children went through the school, it wasn't great then, and that was in the early two thousands. So, um, I don't think it was ever very good when I started in nineteen eighty. Uh, so, let's move forward and keep the positivity and address the realities. And, um, you know, we'll be working hard to get information out to all the board members of things you can share in your communities. And information we may want you to gather, and opportunities to find places to have listening sessions. Or whatever we end up naming that, to just sit and listen, and, and, uh, take it in, and then call it some more and see what we come back with. So thank you all for the honesty, the perspectives, and your thoughts. Uh, it's a wide range of things to take into consideration, thank you all. All right, I think we will keep moving forward here. It's the, uh, committee reports, finance committee.
Yes, uh, I think we're good, um, for now.
Great, awesome, policy committee.
Yes, so we have two, uh, policies for first reading, I just wanna briefly talk about both of them. So the wellness policy is a redo from what we had, and just to put this in perspective, this is actually a big deal policy. It covers a lot, um, it covers basically everything about nutrition, about physical education, its guidance on health education, and, uh, it's a big deal, from that point of view, it's also a big deal because of the implementation, there's gotta be, uh, sort of mandated, is to have reporting every year and a, and a, an assessment of every, uh, every three years. So the new policy is, um, been written in conjunction with the Vermont, uh, School Board Association and the Agency of Education, and it's put together as basic, it was actually a twenty-eight page got, um, uh, local guide of how you have to put the policy together, um, and it's put together as uh, statutes, and then how you have to have a language for it, so that's what this represents. The difference between this and the policy that we have is instead of having like an addendum or appendix with all the different um, ingredients or, or statutes, it's actually put in as part of the thing, and there are, there are hyperlinks to them. And they're important, because you have to follow like exactly what they say in terms of education. Uh, in terms of what's included in, in every part of it, so, it's put in, and it's structured that way, and also, all the parts about about, uh, administering it. So, with that, I would like to pass it on to the board for, uh, as a first read, um, and for, uh, second read next time.
Okay.
And this, but by the way, this has gone through, uh, there is a part of it, is there's, there's a, a school health team, and it's been passed on to them. And one of their representatives had, has looked it over as well.
Okay, thank you. Ann, did you wanna talk about the fiscal management and financial accountability policy?
Yes, so, and that one is also mandated as, uh, just as an update, um, to our policy. Um, I did send it on to Jim Finn, who reviewed it, and he actually, uh, looked it over and changed a few things. And actually, there was a separate report, uh, a separate policy, uh, F twenty-one, which is on reporting. And he just decided that it was better to sort of incorporate into one, and he liked the reporting we used to have, so now it's all in one policy, F twenty, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so I would like both of these sent on, uh, for, uh, as a first read today, for a second read next time.
We need a motion on that, yes. A motion to move those two policies forward to a second reading.
So moved, second.
Thank you, Josh and John, thank you. Um, Josh, I should say in that order. Great, um, on the favor of that?
Discuss with this.
Oh, sure.
Um, I just got something caught my eye, it said the recommended physical activity per day is thirty minutes. And, like, Vermont Department of Health has guidelines for K through five of thirty minutes, but six through twelve, forty-five minutes. So theirs is two twenty-five a week, first is a one fifty. And, and so, and what, what actually got me looking into it is I thought there were also federal guidelines on required amount of, um, of physical ed for kids. So I would just say this, like, check for consistency with federal law and with whatever. I know it was written by the Vermont School Board Association, so you'd think that they pulled the state recommendations, but I happened to see something that said two twenty-five minutes, two hundred and twenty-five minutes a week, six through twelve.
So the Vermont state stand, uh, educational quality standards only require thirty minutes daily. For elementary, there is no expectation at the state level in terms of, um, middle school and high school in terms of activity. Um, so it would be looking at federal recommendations, there are no federal law about that, there are recommendations.
And that's what I found too, was a recommendation, even in Vermont Department of Health, for forty-five minutes a day. I don't know, may, maybe the way we wrote it was just to capture the minimum required, and it even said internal and outside of class. So that, that made it sound like you could not do thirty minutes a day, because the kids could do their thirty minutes at home. Because the, the paragraph says inside or outside of school.
It also says, and include recess and, and, uh, movement built into the curriculum.
They're probably including textings.
Well, I would just say, consider looking at that paragraph versus all the other recommendations federally and state.
So I was just gonna say, I, I, I mean, we probably be more strict than the state, we can't be more lenient, so maybe that's on to something as far as, maybe we can kind of push an initiative there, um, just something to look at, on your end, Elliot, I don't know, but all the resources you got, but.
Right, yes, and it's my understanding that we're compelled to have other school-based activities to promote student wellness, we can't leave a blank. However, our health program exceeds federal mandates, so you can put in, like, you can repeat your However, our health program exceeds federal mandates. So you can put in, like you can repeat yourself that we're going to teach health. But if you leave it blank, you're not compliant with what we're compelled to do.
Okay, we can add that for the second meeting.
All right, votes and grounds.
Oh, did you want to get the vote?
Oh, yes, we have to vote. Um, all in favor of moving those to the second meeting with revisions, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. Buildings and grounds.
Um, we, we did not meet, um, but I, we will meet this month. We did not meet in February. We will meet in March. Um, but it's just becoming increasingly apparent that JCI is not performing under their contract. So the, the system to control the heat in all of the buildings in which they've worked was supposed to be delivered, I believe, August of twenty twenty two. And we still do not have a way to control temperature in our buildings and, and they're not performing under the contract. So I think we're going to look at every, um, option we have. For, you know, every, any recourse we can take.
And that will be part of the executive session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me just go back to see if we can go down that point just technically.
Okay, I thought I said both of them. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, uh, working groups. Any working groups have an update?
We've covered you, Bill.
Proposals meeting tomorrow. That's. Yes. Yes, it's coming. Oh, okay. I thought it was coming after the week of the minutes. All right, uh, the next thing on here are the minutes from February second as well as February fifth. Did anybody have any corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, um, would somebody make a motion to approve? In a second. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. And, and now we're going to put in the, uh, adjustment from the, uh, agenda. Josh is going to tell us what's.
So I have a reservation letter from the emergency, uh, operations coordinator, Mark Duncan, that I'd like to test a couple copies. If anybody wants to read it aloud, they're welcome to settle.
We just usually read them and then make the motion to approve.
Is this your emergency for an interview? Yes. Same, same guy?
Yes.
Yes.
And so I have not read it. I'm just going to give you today. Yeah, I haven't read the first, like, who it was, what it was, if you show me, sign it. I'm like, okay.
If there's anybody else around the table that has done theirs, if you can send it. Yeah, just like anybody had a chance to read it. I'll be online as a chance.
We want to make these meetings be already.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation?
So moved.
In a second. Okay. Are we ready to vote?
I guess my quick question I asked for accepting, I'm just kind of lost. I'm curious as more to why we just approved this or hired him less than a year ago, I believe. So I'd be more concerned on why a quick turnaround and more importantly for the process of getting a new emergency coordinator that works up to date with state amenities and all that, which I imagine we probably are just in the limbo period of not having an emergency coordinator. If we still have everything set in, uh, order in case there is an emergency of any sort at our school.
I'm going to defer to let Sherry say what she can say.
Thank you for a good question. It was a one-year contract. It was a one-year grant. So this was out of Esser money and that time is up. So it started in March of last year and was scheduled to end in March of this year.
Thank you.
And we're looking into, uh, Jones exploring opportunities through Title Four to fund it. Um, and, and what, um, I know with principals and discuss what needs they have to continue the work we do.
Any, all those in favor of accepting the resignation, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Um, at this time, we do have another opportunity for a couple of comments. I see that Mr. West, I would like to say something so that we can go ahead.
Hi, thank you for the time. Um, I just wanted to follow up on, um, the comments that I had heard from various board members as it relates to the perception of the reason for the no vote. Um, I can't speak for everybody. I can't speak for all of Killington for sure, but I do have a strong sense of the community. I run the design review board here in town, so I have a sense of the Act two fifty process and the permitting process. It didn't appear as though the timeline was a realistic timeline. Uh, the timeline would definitely impact costs. And those would be challenges. So I think that was one issue that, you know, was on the table. I think secondly, as it relates to overall cost, I think the folks in Killington feel as though we spend a tremendous amount of money per pupil uh, in educational expense. And I understand this is a state issue and so many people spoke about state funding and, and I think there's a lot of agreement here that the state is an issue. Um, I think we calculated that we're currently sending about a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars to the state per pupil in the town of Killington to educate our children. State average for educational expense per pupil, I believe is around thirty two thousand dollars as far as, you know, if you, if you dig into the budget and divide it by the number of students. So, you know, clearly, and I don't know what the number is in Woodstock. Does anybody have a sense of what that number is in Woodstock per pupil that you're sending to the state?
Yeah, we, we don't usually comment in public comment.
Okay, that's fine. So, you know, it, it just feels on this end that we, you know, and again, I understand this is not necessarily a local issue, but I think this is part of the voting issue. Is that we send a tremendous amount of money to the state as it relates to education. And that's only going to increase a lot when we, you know, have our CLA adjustment happen in the next year and a half or so. So things are going to rapidly change here as it relates to individuals' property taxes. Um, people's property taxes are going to, you know, go high both at the state level, you know, just from our adjustments to CLA, but also then, you know, if we further it with a bond issue. So I think those are serious challenges that you faced in the vote. Um, and no offense to, um, and I'm sorry, I do not know, um, your chair's name, so I apologize. But when you say and make a comment publicly that in no way, shape or form that you'll accept or present a renovation option, I'm not sure that the communities at large and the voters at large and the taxpayers look at that as a board that's actually coming forward with good options to get to a resolution to the problem. There is a serious problem. We all know we need to address it. But by saying that renovation is absolutely not something that you're willing to propose and you'll fight for and it, you'll fight against and so forth, I just do not think is necessarily positive. So I'll end it with encouraging you to include a very basic question in your next survey that says, would you prefer or like to see an option for renovation versus new construction?
Thank you. Uh, Sam?
Um, I have a public comment tonight. Yeah, oh boy. Uh, so I, uh, speaking from public comment, um, I've had a few, um, locals in, uh, Woodstock come to me and to discuss issues regarding the drop-off pickup at Woodstock Elementary, which I know we've spoken about many times in the past. Um, I, you know, would like a public comment to bring it up again. Um, you know, uh, I, I will say kind, somebody who lives in the village, I do drive past pretty frequently watching people, uh, drop, you know, parking along the green to, um, get their kids to school on time. And, you know, there's harried moms with like, uh, toddlers trying, like, you know, they're trying to wrangle them across Route four and their kids a- and their school age kids, trying to get them all there for drop off. And it, you know, I think it's, it's really going to just take one, you know, uh, kid not wanting to hold their mom's hand, clapping the street before, you know, with all the amount of groups, um, that could really be an issue. Um, not to mention the fact that they're getting parking tickets for having to park there, which I also think is a whole nother issue that is not school related, but town related. Um, but I, I do think there should could be more conversation, um, regarding a, uh, drop-off pickup line, like, you know, a real, an actually organized one. And, you know, getting the town, um, involved in maybe, um, getting some of the police officers there every morning to, um, to officiate a drop-off pickup line where really it's not just people, you know, there's that space in front of the school. It's supposed to be, you know, just drop off, pick up, don't park, but people do. And, you know, something a little bit more organized where it really is like, you know, you're driving up, you're dropping off your kids, you keep on moving, you know, you're not even getting out, out of your car. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to add that to public comic tonight and I look forward to talking about it more.
Thank you. Uh, Tom DiGiacomo. Tom, are you there? We can't hear you, Tom, if you're talking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
O- okay. Um, I just, one thing I wanted to say, maybe to conclude. I had the pleasure of going to a one-room schoolhouse in Barnard and, um, going to Woodstock Union High School. Terrifying experience, by the way. And having the pleasure of teaching there. Uh, I do have a slight, if it's a complaint, it's very slight, that I'm very, very interested in design concepts and I've been doing it for thirty years of my life. I would like to know where the exact corner is by the auditorium entrance that says nineteen sixty eight um, in relationship to the new build. And secondly, I'd like to know, I have not had a good experience with communication with the architect or the architectural firm. The final plan change was, I believe, the end of January and the vote came up in early March. And I had just gotten the recent, if, if you had sent out some form of larger uh, format for the final, final plan, not April, but in January, um, would find out that the, uh, th- some of this is petty. But you have a beautiful new design for a library. I think that the one that you have right now is quite nice. Um, but the library didn't have any kind of curtain shield. Uh, that was one of the questions I had asked. And the library vista is looking out on the uh, sports arena and the parking lot. I, I, I wonder why you really want to have open windows. And on the other side, which was touted to be one of the most beautiful parts of the whole concept of the winged central motif was that you had, um, this beautiful maker space with a large vista of the river. Um, and due to cost constraints, um, it has now become a conference room, a faculty lounge and a student lounge. Um, I, I think we need to have at some point an understanding of the value in two thousand twenty four dollars of, uh, Mr. Rockefeller's donation on the auditorium, number one, and Rhoda Teeger's, Teagle's, uh, donation on the, um, library. Uh, you also already have a gymnasium. And yet you have a lot of wellness spaces in the new construct. And I think that talking with the architect might be a good idea for some, if you use the word renovation, uh, I, I understand. I've seen enough of the rusty pipes. I think the entire nineteen fifty eight school can go very easily. I wouldn't miss it a bit. Um, but I do see the idea of a gymnasium, a existing gymnasium. And some of the, uh, entry space and the office space, um, and the library and some of the other areas in the art room, um, can, this can be looked at for the future. You might be able to think in terms of daycare or after-school programs or something. It's a, it's a fifty-something year old building. Um, I, I, I can see it disappearing at the end of the cafeteria completely all the way down. No classrooms, no cafeteria, no old building. But I, I sort of, maybe it's just an emotional historic response, but the, oh, auditorium um, has got some problems, but it's still a nice auditorium. Uh, even if you had to separate the buildings, um, would, in asking the architect, would that be something that's viable? Is that viable for daycare? Is that, um, viable for after-school programs? Uh, what would the cost be to take one? Uh what would the cost be to take one-third of that area that you're talking about demolishing? And utilizing it in conjunction with the new build. Uh I I just think that we have to have a little bit more discussion about these items.
We thank you for that and you'll have plenty of opportunities in the next weeks.
Yeah, I do hope so.
We'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye. All right, Carrie, yes, yes. Bad penny back. Um I'm kind of woke and. Um the information we I apply that. You know, to talk to people about why we don't know or what their concerns are. I think that's important. The other thing is the state is us. So even if it's thirty million dollars from the state, we're paying for that too. So, but I am very interested and will to put in some time. I've got lots of folders that I've created and will ask several more. So I I think we need to see a bigger plan. So that we can really see what all of the. For the new build, I had trouble seeing what the different labels were. Okay, we have bigger plan for us both to see issues. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Carol. All right, um I think we are done with the public time. And we need to go into executive session. I'm gonna propose that we take a vote to go into executive session and then we'll.
I made a motion to go to executive session at nine twenty-five.
And we're recording. All right, there was no action taken in executive session and now we have an opportunity to reflect. Maybe we'd like to offer one or two things that can be added to the minutes.
I just wanted to share Heather and Arnie and I gave Anne the same assurance last year at this meeting. They don't all go this long. We promise.
Yes, they do. I'm Jordan.
I'm home season, yes.
I I think even though we had some serious big things to talk about. It it really helps if we adhere to the two-minute thing more, I think.
Next time we'll have a timer.
So many people plus the public, we want them to, that's all.
I think they recommend three minutes, but. But.
Say what you need to say in two minutes. And probably doesn't need to be said.
I was happy to see how many members of the public joined us on Zoom and in person. Usually not that many.
Try to pass it on to every meeting.
I know we shouldn't.
I'll continue to say thanks everybody for working on this team together. We've got some really awesome lines around the table and appreciate everybody stepping up the. For the committees as well. That's really impressive.
Yes. All right, are we ready for a motion to adjut? So, Ryan, I think then. First and then second and I'm a second.
Good night. Great job, everyone.